We have a couple of administrative items to attend to before we launch into the agenda for this evening. Mr. Milner Braggie moves that we move Article 31 to be heard after Article 18 this evening, which would make it the fourth article on the agenda this night, tonight. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Ms. Hummel, the petitioner moves that we hear Article 25 relating to facial recognition equipment to the first thing at the next session. And since we're inevitably going to have a next session, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. So, the sequence of the articles this evening is Article 9, 15, 18, 31, and then we resume with the Article 16 and sequentially thereafter. Now, when we convene Special Town Meeting III to deal with the marijuana articles, I'm surprised that none of you experts in the conflict of interest laws picked up the fact that my firm Foley-Hoag represented NEDA. It did. And you may have been polite, but what I should have done was to disclose my affiliation with the firm. And I, in the heat of battle, I neglected to do that, so I will do it now to make up for my omission at the time those articles came before us. It is correct that I was a partner at Foley-Hoag for many years and thereafter of counsel for several more years, but I did fully retire as of January 1 of this year to devote my full time to town meeting. So that because of my status as a retired partner, there's no technical conflict of interest, but it's an affiliation you should have known about when you, before I disclosed it tonight. One other thing I wanted to mention, and that is the purpose of our question and answer period is primarily to give town meeting members an opportunity to ask questions that have been suggested by the presentations before we broke for the Q&amp;A period. It's also, there's a secondary purpose, and that is to give people who have not signed up ahead of time and prepared their remarks for the occasion to have an opportunity to comment. It is not for the purpose of permitting those who have signed up and are on speakers lists and who have been foreclosed, perhaps by the advent of the Q&amp;A period, to jump up, jump the queue, so to speak. So, I'll be more careful of that in Q&amp;A periods in the future. So, our first order of business is Article 9. The main motion under Article 9 is found on the pink supplement, pages 1 through 3, moved by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. McMillan, that the town authorize and empower the Select Board to file a home rule petition relating to real estate transfer taxes, as you will hear in exhaustive detail soon. There is a motion to refer on page 9-16. It's moved by Ms. Hamilton and seconded by Mr. Dowdy, that the subject matter of Article 9 be referred to the Land Bank Study Committee with a report due back no later than the annual town meeting scheduled for May 2020. I'll explain the voting of those motions when we reach the voting period. In the meantime, we'll hear from Ms. Brown, who has 12 minutes to present.
One of the tricks to talking in the microphone is to sort of... Okay, here we go. Hello, my name is Deborah Brown. I am a town meeting member from Precinct 1 and also a co-petitioner. And I, along with David Lescouier and Wendy McMillan, are co-petitioners for Warren Article 9. Before I get into my discussion, I'd like to introduce two young people here on the front row, Talia Samino and Maya Selhoub. Please stand up. They worked on a video that I sent out today, a final video, and if you didn't get it, I'll resend it and I'll post it online. But it gives a perspective of what housing insecurity means from the perspective of young people. So, I just want to thank you all for your work. Thank you. So, there's been a lot of discussion about what Warren Article 9 is and is not. So, first, it's a vote to authorize the Select Board to file a home rule petition requesting the Massachusetts Legislature grant the town the power to levy a real estate transfer fee. The Legislature would then, if it approves it, it would come back to the town. The residents would vote to approve the Affordable Housing Warren Article, and that's what it says at its guts. The particular terms of it is that a fee would not exceed 2% of the total sales price above the first $500,000. We could look at other options. One of the things that I'm going to say multiple times is that we wrote it in a generic manner because who among us is going to think of all of the sort of conditions that come up? So, that was that. What you have behind you is sort of a quick roadmap and timeline of how long we've been talking about affordable housing in Brookline. It started in 1998. Okay, I stand accused. So, 1998, well, so you can see why some of us are so eager to see this warrant article pass. So, that's just one of the reasons. One of the major things that happened when I was running for the Housing Authority Board was I had the pleasure of talking with a lot of people. And I met people in all walks of life, and I don't want you to think, oh, it's just people that have absolutely nothing. There are a lot of middle-income people in this town who are scraping by, who are moving multiple times because they can't afford to live here. Affordable housing would, over time, help to relieve that. I also want to say, for the people that don't have a lot of money, we are in a crisis. This is not one of those things, and I guess I should ask, how many people in here actually own their own homes?
Me in the back.
Well, I own my own home, too. I'm not living the experience I saw. Most of the people in this room are not living that experience. And you are being tasked to vote on it. You're being tasked to make the initial cut, which is to get this to the Legislature. As elected officials, understanding that people are suffering, you know, we have a duty also not to take from the general public the right to vote for affordable housing, for improved low-income housing. And by voting, no, you're literally taking a right away from Brookline residents. This warrant article is in part a response to that duty. Now, warrant, and warrant Article 9 was our attempt to respond to what, you know, I described as a crisis, a longstanding crisis. But I'm going to give you some quick numbers. 7,000 of Brookline households are 29% are low or moderate income. 5,000 Brookline households are 27% spend more than 30% of their income on housing. I will tell you, anybody that has a young family or that is elderly, that 30% rule is fallacious. I spent $12,000 last year on medical bills. So, 30% means nothing when I have a huge medical bill. And that's one of the reasons we talk about needing to craft exceptions, especially for the elderly, because the flat-out standards that are in place just don't work. 3% of vacant rental units in Brookline are affordable. I was online last night, and I was looking at The Village, which is one of the affordable housing properties that we post online. I saw rents for $6,000 for one unit. Yeah, you heard me, $6,000 for a rental unit. Where do you think people are going that can't pay that $6,000? And they are being displaced. 47% of renters are living in housing that they cannot afford. Only properties costing less than $367,000 in this town are considered affordable. And when you say, "We've got plenty of affordable housing in Brookline," here's a dirty little secret. Of the 2,000 units that we have, subsidized units that we have, approximately 1,700 are efficiency units and one-bedrooms. Where are the families going? I get a little nervous because this is important. People's lives depend on this. The Housing Trust, since 1998, has spent approximately 12, has collected approximately $12 million. They spent $9 million. We have houses in Brookline that sell for two, three, four times that. I'm not asking you for a kidney. I'm not asking you for an awful lot. All I'm saying is that at this moment, consider voting simply to get this over to the Legislature so that the questions can get asked. So, some of you are going to say, you know, but what does this get us? If down the road, what we're hoping to collect is somewhere between $5 and $15 million for affordable and low-income housing. And that gives us the ability to make some necessary repairs. It also means, and now one of the terms in the warrant article talks about sustainability, to apply funds for that. People have expressed concerns about green space. Well, one thing that Brookline is very good about is taking care of the green space. And I think anytime you're talking about building housing, you can't do it without including language about green space. Some folks say this is just flat-out wrong-headed. I've had people say, "Oh, no, you know, you absolutely can't do it." Well, the reality is, is that the market has created this problem, and it's up to government to fix it. I'm looking at every one of you. It's up to us to fix it. So, I started collecting data on how we balance priorities in this town. And one of the things that I started looking at was, when people started talking to me about, "Deb, you know, that's a lot of money." I was like, "Well, shoot, we're talking $5 or $15 million, but we're talking about spending upwards of a half billion dollars for three schools." How much money do we spend every year on parks and recreation? If you look at our, at this town's economic development language around what its priorities are, you'll see more language about cemeteries and parks than you do about affordable housing. I'm not blaming anybody in this room, but I'm saying it's time to turn the corner. We can't continue to do this. You can't kick the elderly, the disabled, children down the road, and that's what this Cambridge is spending approximately $20 million this year on affordable housing. Somerville's going to spend approximately $11 million. We all know that in a perfect world, we'd have a CPA, and we don't, and we likely won't. Even our own town papers say there's no chance, and heck, that's going to happen. But I also want to point out that as we look at these issues, you know, we're not talking about a huge amount of money. But I'm asking you to think about just that next step. Now, we did look at funding options. We looked at, you know, what else is out there? And, you know, it's, one of the things that we looked at was a CPA, and when the town's paperwork said it wasn't going to pass, we were like, ugh. Capital gains, well, capital gains for an individual is $250,000.
You have two minutes.
I've got a timekeeper. Thank you. We're talking about a half a million. Opportunity zones won't work in Brookline. Delinquent taxes, that's, that won't generate the kind of money that we need. Tax recapture, again, it won't be enough. Bonds. Raise your hand if you think this town is going to propose floating bonds for affordable housing. It won't happen. It hasn't happened. This is how we ended up with the real estate transfer tax. Local foundations, they may be good for seed money, but they're not going to do it. So, what do we get out of this? In the long run, what we do is, we increase intergenerational wealth. People that have nothing made down the road actually end up with something. Gender-based inequality actually begins to be addressed with stable housing. Health disparities. Reducing housing segregation patterns. And if you don't believe me, go to the Boston Foundation report. We can improve educational outcomes. Report I saw recently said that the biggest determinant for educational disparities, it's not the schools, it's where the kids are living. It's where the kids are living.
You have one minute.
I want to thank every one of you all for listening to me and taking this argument and these issues to heart. I know I'm asking you to take a big leap. I'm asking you to buck what we traditionally do, which is to send things to committee. I'm asking you to lead. I'm asking you to lead us out of this quagmire of minimal affordable housing and, in some instances, uninhabitable low-income housing. Vote and do what you know is right. Putting this back in a committee for another six, nine months is wrong-headed, and the people that will suffer most are not the people in this room, because as we started out, most of us own our own homes. We don't have this insecurity. So, thank you very much.
(applause) Ms. Hamilton and Ms. Pelkey, please come forward.
Thank you, Moderator Gadsby. Heather Hamilton speaking on behalf of the Select Board. In the spring of 2018, Town Meeting heard about a proposal for a land bank that would raise money through a real estate transfer tax that would potentially fund three areas: open space, school property, and affordable housing. Ultimately, this article was referred to a Select Board Study Committee, which I chair. The charge was developed, members recruited, and the committee was voted in late 2018. The mission of the committee is to study the value to the town of establishing a multipurpose Brookline land bank as contemplated under Article 24 of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. The Land Bank Study Committee shall complete the following tasks in connection with this charge as follows: advantages of using a transfer tax as a mechanism to provide alternative revenue to Brookline; identify the potential range of use for such a transfer tax; identify if a land bank is the best mechanism for administrating the allocation of such funds; examine the economic impact of a potential transfer tax; and finally, consider whether adoption of the Community Preservation Act can be an alternate or additional means of achieving the goals of the land bank study, the land bank contemplated under Article 24. The committee has met every month since December of 2018 for a total of 11 times and have been, and have a meeting scheduled towards the end of this month. We have heard from a number of speakers, including the Chair of the Assessors for the town, the town's Deputy Administrator, one of our town state representatives, and a Vice President of Brookline Bank, and a number of people who worked on passing the Community Preservation Act referred to as the CPA in Brookline. The committee members bring a wide lens of backgrounds, including a member of the Board of Assessors, who is a professor emeritus of economics from Boston College, an attorney who serves on the Economic Development Advisory Board, EDAB, a financial planner who serves on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, a land use planner, a landscape architect who serves on the Planning Board, and the original warrant article petitioner, a commissioner from the Housing Authority, and a liaison from the School Committee. One of the first topics we investigated as a committee was the two failed attempts to pass the Community Preservation Act that allows communities to access matching funds levied through the Registry of Deeds in order to pay for the preservation of open space, historic preservation, and affordable housing. Back in 2002, during the first attempt, the matching funds were at 100%. Today, they are closer to 10%. What I personally find striking through the testimony of those who had worked incredibly hard on this altruistic goal is a similar conversation around the percentage to settle on: 1%, 2%, or 3%. If I have learned anything while serving on, as a town meeting member and now on the Select Board, it is that many people can agree on broad values. It is when we start to discuss the details of how to implement a policy and who should have to pay that the alliances start to break apart. This is a complex issue, and to treat it as anything but is a disservice to the work this committee has undertaken. We must study why a mechanism like the CPA failed not once, but twice in Brookline. Otherwise, we will end up with similar results. The Study Committee is doing that right now. We committed to preparing a report for Town Meeting and presenting the findings no later than the annual Town Meeting in May of 2020. This warrant article claims the state legislature will decide this issue in January of 2020. The Land Bank Study Committee recently met with a member of the state delegation, and there was no indication this statement is true. There is no question we need affordable housing sooner rather than later, but the same can be said for open space and school capacity. If we, as a town, decide to proceed with advocating for a transfer tax, it will not be an easy fight. It will take strong coalitions that get us above 50% one way or the other. This warrant article may win the battle, but it loses the war. In other words, it will take, it will likely take a broad coalition of interest groups such as open space advocates, school supporters, and affordable housing advocates to achieve a positive result at the polls, because at the end of this process, Brookline voters will need to vote on whatever proposal we've asked the state legislature for permission to enact. It is in light of this context that the Select Board moved to refer this warrant article back to the current Land Bank Study Committee for incorporation of its charge. In a vote of three in favor, one opposed, and one abstention, the Select Board moves favorable action on referral. Thank you.
Good evening. Lyd Olson Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I am also asking that you vote in favor of a motion to refer Article 9 to the already existing Land Bank Study Committee, of which I am a member. As you may recall, the Land Bank Study Committee was formed when Article 24 from the May 2018 Town Meeting was referred. Town Meeting agreed that the complexities of seeking a real estate transfer tax for the purpose of having a dedicated source of funding for the purchase of land for use for a variety of town needs needed further study. To quote from the explanation for the original warrant article, "Brookline land devoted to schools, parks, open space, recreational facilities, conservation needs, and affordable housing is already insufficient to meet Brookline's current needs. Currently available public land will face growing demands as a result of further population growth." The committee has been working to find answers to the number of complex questions that were outstanding when Town Meeting voted to refer. The uses contemplated as potential recipients for funds from the land bank are still being considered by the committee, but reflective of the original Article 24 would likely include affordable housing, open space, park and recreation lands, and schools. It is not true, as some have suggested, that the Land Bank Study Committee might recommend a real estate transfer tax that does not include affordable housing as a target source for revenue expenditures. In this regard, the community land trust model holds great promise in helping the town address affordable housing creation in a long-term manner. It was a common perception at Town Meeting that, as the Newberry College closure illustrated so well, the town is at a distinct disadvantage when desirable properties go on the market because we have no dedicated source of funds for land purchases. Article 9 preempts the work of this committee. It also narrows, narrows the focus of a possible real estate transfer tax to only affordable housing. I don't see the kind of careful analysis and planning that we should be doing before proposing such a fee for affordable housing. Does the amount of tax revenue proposed translate to a reasonable assumption about how much new affordable housing we can absorb, or where it will go, or whether or not we have the infrastructure to support it? We don't know. On October 21, 2019, the Land Bank Study Committee met and heard from a petitioner of Article 9. At that meeting, the Land Bank Committee voted to refer Warren Article 9 back to our committee. At this same meeting, we heard from Representative Vitolo, who addressed the petitioner's concerns about delaying a home rule petition from Brookline until March or May Town Meeting. It was his opinion that submitting a petition later would not be fatal to our goals. In other words, we did not hear that a vote on Beacon Hill was planned for January 2020. The committee also had concerns about not wanting to submit conflicting home rule petitions, causing confusion about what it is that Brookline really wants. In the view of some members of the committee, that any use of the real estate transfer tax must include a balanced approach to the town's needs. For instance, were the town to secure funding and build considerable additional affordable housing, we would be creating an even greater need for additional park, open space, and recreational lands. We already have a shortage of these lands per capita, as documented in the town's 2006 Parks Open Space and Recreation Strategic Plan, which estimated that the town needs an additional 36 to 58 acres of land for these uses. Additional population density creates additional needs for open space parks and recreation land, and most likely land for additional school capacity. Therefore, we believe that any source of additional funding should address the town's combined needs for land, as the original Warren Article 24 had proposed. We also feel that a broader constituency, as Select Person Heller already mentioned, would be needed to pass any such tax at the ballot box. So, I'm asking you to please vote for referral of Warren Article 9 to the Land Bank Study Committee. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Levy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. And I've been doing, concerned with affordable housing in Brookline for over 30 years, oh, close to 35 years. And I've been waiting since I was one of the original members of the Housing Advisory Board to see the town take really strong action to address affordable housing. And there's been action, but in the meantime, the affordable housing situation has gotten worse, not better.
worse, not better. So I'm going to ask you, if not us, who? If not now, when? When does this town start to make a real commitment to spend real money, to find real revenue sources for affordable housing? And like Deborah Brown, I'm even more tired than she is of waiting. I don't want to blame anybody; that's not the point of this argument. But I think we do have an opportunity here to sound a clarion call and acknowledge the fact that Brookline has a silent, but very real and very urgent, affordable housing crisis. And that goes to their homeowners, as well as renters. It goes for people of middle income, or even slightly above, as well as for people in the low end of the income scale. We don't have enough, we can't use our Section 8 vouchers, all of them in Brookline, because there aren't enough apartments for rent that are within the guidelines which allow Section 8 to be granted to somebody. People are leaving town because affordable housing is not there.
You have one minute, sir.
Okay, thank you. So basically, I'm saying, let's get started. I don't want to wait for the Land Bank Study Committee to make its decision, because I have no idea when that will happen. As I understand it from John Vinsquay's letter, they may still be debating whether a transfer tax is a reasonable vehicle or not. And we're past that point. We've got to do something, and so I'm going to support Article 9. I hope you will, too. Thank you.
Mr. Doughty.
Dennis Doughty, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, speaking for the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee supports initiatives to improve affordable housing situation in Brookline, but we had many concerns regarding Article 9, in particular, to the specific provisions outlined in the article. Number one, we were concerned about fairness. Many members felt it unfair to exempt the first $500,000 from such taxation. Members expressed concern around the fact that, as proposed, a couple who sold their single-family home in order to downsize and remain in Brookline could be subject to taxes on both transactions. Petitioners have acknowledged that some communities declined to tax in this situation, and suggested that any final legislation might establish such an exemption. But there is, of course, no guarantee that it would work out that way. And finally, many members expressed concern around the impact on the elderly or other vulnerable populations, especially those whose net worth is mostly contained in their home. Although they may have experienced significant appreciation over the years, the tax may still hit many very hard, or be perceived as doing so. And not every transaction will necessarily represent a profit for the seller that can offset the pain of an additional tax, which could be as high as 2 percent. Second, we were concerned about the limitations this could impose, or this would impose. Members questioned whether it was reasonable to so severely restrict the potential uses of such additional revenues. Increasing the availability of affordable housing is an admirable goal, but so are increased green space, school initiatives, and a variety of transportation initiatives. And this is potentially a lot of money to permanently devote to a single cause, especially when increasing affordable housing almost certainly exacerbates those other needs. Three, we were concerned about the unusual nature of this home rule petition. This petition sets out a set of general public objectives and trusts that future negotiations between the General Court and the Select Board will result in appropriate legislation.
You have one minute.
Many members would prefer Brookline to spell out exactly what it wants, and accordingly would prefer more discussion and debate prior to filing any petition. And finally, we had process concerns. A common argument was that we have only recently established the Land Bank Study Committee, which you've heard much about tonight. Members argued that this transfer tax is clearly within the purview of that committee, and we should allow the committee to do its work and wait for its recommendations. So by an overwhelming margin of 19 in favor, three opposed, and two abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the motion to refer the subject matter of Article 9 to the Land Bank Study Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Leppson. And Mr. Gertler.
All right, I'll get this right here. I'll just hold it, and we'll go from there. All righty. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and a special thank you to the petitioners of Article 9. I'm Bob Leppson, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9, speaking on behalf of a unanimous Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, AKA the CDICR. I'm also a member of the Land Bank Study Committee. At this point, I'm not going to rehash all the numbers, statistics, and stories presented by Ms. Brown, which clearly point to our glaring need for additional affordable housing here in Brookline. But instead, I want to take a step back and ask each and every one of you to think about your history here in town, and what were the circumstances that enabled you to become a Brookline resident? How many of us have been here for 20, 30, 40, or even 50 years? Given the hot real estate market, how many of us could honestly actually afford to move here today as a first-time resident? And think back, as I think back when I first moved here to town in 1983, my portion of the rent in a shared and quite spacious four-bedroom apartment was, okay, wait for it, $250 a month. And today, our current mortgage for a single-family house on Thorndike Street, which we bought for a relative pittance back in 1994, is actually less than the rental cost of a one-bedroom apartment at 455 Harvard, which is one of the new 40B developments being built in North Brookline. Sure, there are those who are making huge incomes and can live anywhere they wish, including Brookline. And yes, Brookline is a wonderful community that is safe, close to Boston, access to public transportation, and of course, great schools. But why should Brookline be a place that only the affluent can afford to live? Why should our town be so exclusive? Do we want it to be that way? For me, the answer is clearly no. Please do not get caught up in all the details of whether Article 9 is written as written as seeking a 1 percent tax, a 2 percent tax, or what the right exemption amount is.
You have one minute, sir.
Or should the tax be a percentage of the capital gain, or simply assessed on the actual value of the property, et cetera, et cetera? Remember, all Article 9 does is authorize the Select Board to file a petition with the state legislature that, if approved, will authorize the town to levy a real estate transfer tax to fund affordable housing, and will only go into effect if Brookline's voters approve the transfer tax during a town-wide referendum. The provisions are far from written in stone. I know that many folks here think tonight the article needs more work and analysis, and should be referred back to the Land Bank Committee for further study, but I totally disagree. In conclusion, I ask you to look within and ask yourself, how committed are we to truly increasing the supply of affordable housing, as well as improving the quality of affordable units that already exist here in Brookline? And if, as a town, we are committed, how will we fund this? Where will the money come from? The money will come from a new transfer task. So let's find a way to join the petitioners and a unanimous CDICR in supporting Article 9. Please vote yes on the petitioner's motion and no on the motion to refer back to the Land Bank Study Committee. Thank you.
Is Mr. Gertler here?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Nobrega, please come forward.
Nicholas Gertler, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. This was actually my first year in Town Meeting. And I can assure you, I didn't come to Town Meeting to fight against affordable housing. That being said, I was a bit surprised to see Article 9 in its form as it is on the books, in the documents for some weeks until we got actually to the start of Town Meeting. No one outside of this room apparently had heard of it. And I found that to be unusual, because this is one of the few things that we are doing here that actually affects every single homeowner directly, because whether they sell this year, or in five years, or 10 years, it's a fairly sizable amount of money that comes out of that sale. So I started asking people around in my precinct, and many of them, actually all of them, were supportive of affordable housing, supportive of the objective, not particularly thrilled about the method. So I would urge you to support the referral to committee, and I think there are five questions that need to be addressed for this to be a satisfactory decision. And nothing you'll hear from me hasn't been said on the various Facebook groups and on the TM listserv. As we've gotten closer to today, it has actually gotten some life, and people found out about it and said, wait a second, what is this all about? So five questions. First of all, what do we get as a town for this? I genuinely don't know, and I'm not saying it's not potentially significant. I don't fully understand how this would be used. I think before we start asking people to allocate $5,000, $10,000, $20,000 of their net assets, we should have a good explanation as to what the town gets for it. Number two, is this amount actually insignificant? And the documents and the narrative around and in favor of this Warren article, the amount is noted as insignificant. I think for most people, $5,000, $10,000, $20,000 is not insignificant, even if it's something they have to pay at some point in the future. The third question is, what is the life situation that people find themselves in when they would be subject to this tax?
You have one minute.
The narrative is, the rich person who's lived here for 30 years, bought their home for a pittance, and now is making tons of money on it, that I would suggest is a minority of people in this situation. I think we need to understand that. Fourth, should this be imposed on the absolute price of the property, or on the gain on the property, as virtually any tax is, other than sales taxes? Finally, does it make sense to create a dedicated revenue stream for this single purpose when the town does not have a dedicated revenue stream for any other purpose? So I actually don't know what the answer to these questions are. I think we should satisfy ourselves that we do know what the answers to these questions are before we ask the legislature to let us impose the tax. So I would suggest referral to committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nobrega. And Mr. Hyken, would you come forward, please?
Mariah Nobrega, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4, speaking in support of Warren Article 9. When I first heard about this Warren article, I thought what most of you probably thought: don't we have a committee already looking at this? I had supported the establishment of the Land Bank Committee and thought this was covered, so to speak. However, a couple of things I've seen and heard this fall have really crystallized the importance of supporting this Warren article for me. Number one, it was pointed out to me that we have community advocacy groups for our schools and parks, PTOs, Brookline Green Space, many Friends of Parks groups, who will ensure that funding for those programs is maximized whenever possible. There has not been a single Friends of Affordable Housing group. Affordable housing needs advocates. Two, I understood that this Warren article complements the Land Bank Committee by allowing Brookline to be part of the statewide legislative discussion, while also allowing the Land Bank Committee to continue to do its work. By voting yes, our state reps can engage in important discussion about how this legislation might develop at the state level, and the Land Bank Committee can, in parallel, continue to look at the many different issues it sees in front of it. So voting yes on Warren Article 9 will actually provide better, more locally relevant information back to the Land Bank Committee, which would be a tremendous benefit. As a homeowner and the daughter of people who own property here in town, certainly I have a lot of skin in the game. For people like me and my parents, homeowners, commercial property owners, any eventual real estate transfer tax would have a financial impact. But I see it as an investment in maintaining a diverse Brookline, and I know that voters will have the chance to affirm any transfer tax via a referendum before any of this is finalized. Prioritizing affordable housing is necessary. We should be in the statewide conversation from day one, and this Warren article is just the first step. In conclusion, I urge you all to join me in supporting Warren Article 9. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyken.
Steve Hyken, speaking for the Planning Board. The Planning Board certainly acknowledges the need for affordable housing and generally supports the idea and the concept of a real estate transfer fee. However, as you've heard, the real estate, or the Land Bank Study Committee includes a member of the Planning Board, and in discussion with that member and the other members of the board, we believe that the concept, as presented in Article 9, of a transfer fee is premature and needs further evaluation. So we concur with the others who have recommended that it be returned to the Land Bank Study Committee, and hopefully in time for a report and some final action at the spring town meeting. So unanimously, we voted no action on Article 9 and for referral to the Land Bank Study Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, thank you. Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9, and Chair of Brookline PACS. I have a question, which may be a yes or no answer, but I want to preface it with a comment. I share the concerns of the people that want this voted up or down and voted yes, not a referral. And I go back as far as Mark on housing issues in Brookline, and there's a couple of other people still in the room that do, not too many. Just very briefly, a recap, because I know I can only speak very briefly. It was in, before I became...
Win.
Yes, thank you. Before I became active in town, it was primarily liberal homeowners that got rent control passed here, and I was elected to the Board of Selectment with Estelle Cates on a pro-rent control platform. And I still have the Brookline Citizen front page, highest vote count in memory for the two of us. And then three years later, ran for reelection on the heels of a projected 21 percent property tax increase, and the turnout was double what it had been three years earlier, and we all got thrown out. But the fact is that what's happened since then, we've become a less diverse community. Some of us, I had the good fortune of buying with my parents' help a house in 1978. It's now worth 10 times that value. And all of you know what's happened, and the people who bemoaned the lack of diversity in our community, I share their concerns. So getting to the point, which is, I can be, please correct me if I'm wrong, if this resolution passes, this is not the language that has to go to the legislature. The Select Board would have to draft a home rule bill, and it could be studied by the Land Bank Study Committee. So the details in this resolution are not what the issue is right now. If I'm correct on that rhetorical question, then it seems to me the only point of passing this resolution is a very important point, which is to express the urgency by Town Meeting to see that this happens. And the Land Bank Committee can work on it in the meantime, file a bill, and get something passed. It's just a matter of stating how important this is.
Well, is your question rhetorical, or would you like an answer?
Well, if I'm wrong on my premise, I'd be happy to hear it, but not so happy. But I would be eager to hear it without being happy. If I'm wrong on my premise, that this is just a resolution that will urge the Select Board to file a bill, and the language of the bill is up to them with help from the Land Bank Study Committee. That's the question.
Town Council.
Good evening. Jocelyn Murphy, Town Council. The answer to your question, Mr. Rosenthal, is yes.
I thought so. Thank you.
Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15. So first, I'd like to read just a, the Planning Board, when they approved last year's Warren Article 24, called it "a Brookline-specific alternative to the CPA with goals that are well-aligned with the needs of the town." And that's why it got broad support. It should be noted that the CPA did fail twice in this body. Newton was an early adopter. They put forth a 1 percent tax that was easily voted in. Brookline twice put a 3 percent tax on that was voted down. So just a little bit of background. So here are my concerns. The Land Bank Study Committee is counting on these funds to fund the Land Bank. I looked at, I did my research, I looked at it. That's what was offered at that time when we voted it in 18 months ago. So one question I have is, what other funding source for the Land Bank is being considered? So that's one question. You know, if this is totally devoted to affordable housing, when the original article said that it would be devoted to schools, parks, open space, recreational facilities, conservation areas, real estate, and of course, affordable housing was an important element in this, and economic development to expand that. this, and economic development to expand, to expand that. And a comment, too, is, last year, it was presented as a 1 percent tax. This year, it's being proposed as a 2 percent. So I have that question, too, why change it? And then a comment that, it seems to me that the only reason to doing it tonight is impatience. But my concern is a lack of study, that we know, we need to know the unanticipated financial implications of passing Warren Article Nine, just like a deeper study showed that there were unanticipated consequences to Warren Articles Five and Six. And I think that's a valid concern when we're dealing with significant, potentially significant funds.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Question, answer to the question? What other funding sources would be available to the Land Bank Study Committee if this, which was the one proposed, is redirected?
Ms. Hamilton.
So that's why we looked at the CPA. It was in the charge to see whether or not, well, one, to understand why it failed, and then, two, to see whether or not that was something that we could pursue in lieu of going with the real estate transfer tax. I could tell you that the, the study committee has been looking at a 5 percent, or a half a percent and half a percent that would add up to 1 percent total, and that the three uses have remained on the table, school, open space, or recreation, and affordable housing.
But it was the transfer tax that was supposed to, is supposed to fund that for the land bank?
Right.
Is that correct?
We did reach out to a group that has helped other communities successfully pass the CPA, to see whether or not we could change the uses within that framework, but we didn't get too far.
I see. So just so people know, Newton passed 1 percent. They got millions of dollars in state matching funds.
That was back when it was 100 percent matched. Yeah.
And a point of clarification?
No, 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 Ms. Brown. Yes, sir.
Wait a minute.
Just wait your turn.
Bob Miller, Precinct Eight. I think this may have been just answered by Ms. Hamilton or Ms. Murphy, but I was wondering if we pass the main motion here, is there anything that would restrict us from expanding on the use of the monies beyond affordable housing?
Town Council.
Jocelyn Murphy, Town Council. I don't believe so. I think the way the article is written would permit, so long as affordable housing was included, as long as the public objectives of the article are met. I believe that would be okay.
Thank you. Mr. Van Schoy.
Yes, thank you very much, and begging the indulgence of Town Meeting...
Your name, please.
I'm sorry. I can't believe I still forget to do that. John Van Schoy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Thirteen. I won't be asking questions. I will make some brief comments, if that's okay. I want to say two things about a phrase, two phrases you've heard tonight. One of them is, "Let's not get all lost in the details." I'm sorry to disagree, but it's all about the details. That's why when we originally set out to do something about affordable housing in Brookline, not very long ago, it was just over a year ago, we assigned it to a committee, we carefully formed the committee so that there would be the right kind of expertise brought to bear. We gave the committee time, and we now still have time to let that committee finish the job and do it right. If you don't pay attention to the details, you could end up with some form of assistance for affordable housing that ends up punishing people who are in the same situation in terms of their economic situation as the people who are being helped. You could end up with any number of other consequences that you never intended. That's why we have to get lost in the details. The other phrase I heard tonight is, "All this is, is." And that's why you're hearing these questions about, "If we pass this, can't we still do something that isn't what this says we're going to do?" Well, first of all, there's not, there's kind of an illogic to that. But second of all, on the basis of so many years of experience here at Town Meeting, I guarantee you that whatever the legalities are of what would follow if we pass this, you will hear very quickly, "Oh, no. Town Meeting spoke clearly on this. We are to use a real estate transfer tax for affordable housing and affordable housing only. That's what Article Nine was all about." So don't kid yourselves. We're making a statement tonight, and the statement we made, "We," not somebody else, "we," Town Meeting, just over a year ago, was, "Look at this carefully, do it the right way, do it the way we have tried to do things in the past, because we know that it's the way to get it done properly. Let it be studied, let them finish the study, and then, when they come back with the study, then let's vote on the result of the study, not let's short-circuit the study, change the original purpose of the vote, and embark on something that hasn't been properly studied." That's my comment. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Brown, you've had 12 minutes at the mic, and I'll allow you to make a brief rejoinder, if that's what you're up to. Go ahead.
In all deference to the moderator, it wasn't a rejoinder, it was a point of clarification. One of the comments that was made was that, one of the reasons that, that there's opportunity to add additional things, if you go back to the 2016 Affordable Housing Report, one of the things that it states very clearly is that one of the reasons that the CPA failed was because it included too many different items. So when we start talking about adding all of these things in, we may just be back to the future.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, we're now back to speak, people who signed up to speak, and we'll hear from Ms. McNally. The remaining speakers are all speaking in favor of the main motion under Article Nine, by the way. Is Ms. McNally here? And Mr. Durr, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please?
My name is Rita McNally. I'm a Precinct Two member, and I'm also a member of the Housing Advisory Board and the Brookline Improvement Coalition. And I'm here to, for several reasons. The first is to speak on behalf of the Housing Advisory Board, on behalf of a majority of the members who support the passing of this Article Nine. And the second is just to speak on behalf of myself. I've been working in the affordable housing world for 54 years at this time, and I'm a little bit sick and tired of listening to people mouth about affordable housing. And it's not just about low-income people, it's middle-income people, too. We look around, we are concerned because we don't have the flow of diversity in this community. Part of the reason is, people can't afford to live here. So I would like to see some form, and I think Article Nine is a beginning for this, where we can actually bring people into the community at an affordable price. We want to also look at, I don't know if you still have the pink sheets that you were handed out last week before Turkey Day, and if you've got it, it's a supplement number three, and on the first page there is, it's the fourth, "Whereas." I'm also going to speak on behalf of the Brookline Housing Authority, and Patrick Dober is sitting here first, and I'll let him be the lead speaker, but I'm going to say what I need to say about it. Because part of what happens in Brookline is, we build these affordable developments, we build them on the edges of the town. One set is by me in Precinct Two, close to Commonwealth Avenue. The other is down off of High Street, in those areas, and around Walnut Street and Lee Street. And at some point, we've got to bring people in closer to us, and I know you understand that. So the fourth, whereas, on the pink sheet says, "Whereas housing owned or sponsored by the Brookline Housing Authority is a necessary resource for sustaining demographic diversity." And that's true. You know that's where our diversity majority comes from. And for sustaining the supply of affordable rental housing in Brookline. It's 30 percent of each occupant's money, which is a large chunk of the money.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Oh, my God. Okay.
He won't help you.
(Laughter) Speak for yourself, Mr. Moderator. Now, 30 seconds, okay. The Affordable Housing Trust from 1998, that's 21 years ago. During that time, only 358 units have come into the town of affordable housing, while at the same time, the market rent housing that has come to Brookline is hundreds and hundreds of units. Many of you are probably living in, in the chaos of that kind of a situation. So this, at least, if this passes, it would give us the funding that we could to put something together. And as far as being over the hump of the 10 percent, we've lost that. We're back down to 9.22 percent, so we haven't put a stop on the 40B onslaught yet, and there's a lineup of 40Bs. So it'll be more market rents, and whatever we can get, the five units or six units, or how many we can get at any time. It's not enough to cover the needs of people, not when they're, Patrick can tell you better than I.
And he's about to, because you're out of time, isn't that?
In conclusion.
Oh, I'm not fooled by that one.
(Laughter) There are 2,500 seniors that are on a waiting list to get into affordable housing in Brookline at the housing, and a listing of over 5,000 families, and that was in November. I don't know what it's changed to now, so please help and please consider and please vote favorably for Article Nine. Thank you.
There's been a motion for the question. Is there a second? I'll allow it. I, I have the following people listed to speak in favor of the main motion. Mr. Dober for the BHA, Mr. Gordon, Ms., Ms. Baker, Mr. Fernandez, and Mr. Stephen Vogel. And you see who's at, you'd like a...
Just a point of privilege. I think Town Meeting should know that Patrick Dober, the Executive Director of the Brookline Housing Authority, this is the fourth night of Town Meeting this fall that he's attended to, because of this article, and he's next up. So I'd like to hear from him, and then we can call the question, perhaps.
Well, you can. So the question's been called, there's been a second. If two-thirds of Town Meeting votes in favor of this motion, we will terminate debate, and Mr. Dober will not speak. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion fails. Mr. Dober.
I wasn't expecting that particular sort of notoriety. Good evening, folks, and thank you for the opportunity. Patrick Dober, Executive Director of the Brookline Housing Authority, an independent agency serving the town of Brookline. I've been the director the past eight years, and I've spent my entire career in the affordable housing field. The motivation for the Housing Authority to strongly support Warren Article Nine comes from the basic logic that we are the largest provider of affordable housing in Brookline. The BHA owns and operates more than 40 percent of all affordable housing apartments in town, and the 2,800 Brookline residents that benefit from our assistance represent about 5 percent of the town's population, yet account for a much higher proportion of Brookline's diversity in terms of income, race and ethnicity, disability status, and so on. And our daily work at the Housing Authority gives us a unique understanding of the dire need. A couple of illustrations. Our waiting list totals more than 10,000 names, and the capital repair needs for our 23 buildings due to decades of underfunding are in the tens of millions of dollars. And now currently, the town of Brookline provides about a million dollars annually for affordable housing. Compared to other community needs in Brookline, I think you can make a good case that affordable housing is underfunded, and the current funding level is less than in neighboring communities, and the current funding level cannot possibly overcome the two major housing challenges that we face. First, preserving aging affordable properties like ours for future generations, and secondly, creating incentives to build new housing. Our main mission the next several years is to rehabilitate our invaluable stock of existing housing, and in addition, if at all feasible, we intend to build attractive new housing units on some of our existing sites. We have one major renovation project in construction right now, our seniors' property at 61 Park Street, and several more in the pipeline. And so the Housing Authority is certainly capable and ready to spend new funds that may become available, as are, by the way, other very competent affordable housing organizations in the greater Boston area who can help meet the need here in Brookline. So in closing, for the Housing Authority and the town to work together to preserve and expand affordable housing, we really must have new strategies and sources of funds and have them as soon as possible. And so for those reasons, we strongly endorse Warren Article Nine, which would generate urgently needed resources to help maintain the diversity in Brookline that we all cherish. Thank you.
Let's try it again. Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, I read you the list of people who signed up to speak, all in favor of Article, the main motion. All those in favor of terminating debate, calling the question, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Now, we will vote first on the motion to refer on page nine dash 16, a motion to refer the subject matter of this article to the Land Bank Study Committee.
(Inaudible.)
No, if there are 35 Town Meeting Members, then there certainly will be. We'll have a recorded vote. If this motion passes, then that concludes matters under Article Nine. If it fails, we will vote on the main motion on the pink supplement. This is Article Nine, motion to refer. You have 60 seconds. Press one if you favor the motion to refer, two if you oppose it, three if you abstain. Motion fails by a vote of 96 in favor, 101 opposed, and five abstentions. On the main motion, on the pink supplement?
Recorded vote.
Recorded vote? Well, you'll have a recorded vote. This is Article Nine, main motion. Press one if you favor the main motion, two if you're opposed, and three if you're abstaining. Motion carries by a vote of 139 to 44 with 16 abstentions. We now turn to Article 15. And there are three articles that will be before us within the next, well, heavens knows, I hope within the next hour, all of which have several speakers in favor, no speakers opposed, all of which are of environmental and related concerns that generally typically pass this Town Meeting pretty overwhelmingly. I've had suggestions by a few Town Meeting members that we have a motion for the question before we hear from anybody. I don't think that makes much sense. I think that we can't assume that all of you have studied diligently the combined reports and know what these articles are about. But I will permit a motion for the question after we hear from two speakers. And of course, you don't have to terminate debate, but we'll have two speakers on Article And then I will entertain a motion for the question. The motion offered under Article 15 is on pages two and three of the rose-colored supplement moved by Ms. Pelkey, seconded by Mr. Waschinsky, to amend the zoning bylaw in a fashion that you will hear about. Requires a two-thirds vote, and I call on Ms. Pelkey, who will have eight minutes.
I have the unique challenge here of trying to read my notes, flip the slides, and talk to you all at the same time. So forgive me if I mess up.
Well, you've already messed up because you haven't announced your name.
So direct me how I change this. I'm sorry, I'm just prepping here. What changes the slide? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mel. Okay, so I am Linda Olson Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. So Article 15 is about parking, but really, it's also about urban design, land use economics, climate change, transportation, public health, business vitality, and saving the places we love in Brookline. Article 15 would eliminate onsite minimum parking requirements for storefront uses within the transit parking overlay district. Current minimums for these uses will become the maximum number of parking spaces allowed, and the transit parking overlay district is the entire area within one-half mile of all Green Line T stops. The maximums could be exceeded with a special permit. Our compact walkable commercial areas succeed because of their public transportation access, shared public parking, dense neighborhoods within walking and biking distance, and the unique combination of destinations all in one area. What makes these areas welcoming and pleasant for pedestrians are the frequency of doorways, active ground floor uses with large picture windows, and wide continuous sidewalks not broken up by driveways and their crossing vehicles. Of our existing retail and restaurant uses townwide, 68 percent currently have no onsite parking. And a survey of visitors to Coolidge Corner showed that 60 percent walked and biked, 11 percent took public transit, and 29 percent drove. But under our current zoning bylaw, these places that we love could not be built. Requiring onsite private parking is in opposition to our existing and historic transit-oriented land use patterns. This is the garage and facade of 1285 Beacon Street, one of the few commercial developments built under our current zoning. As you can see, garage fronts, busy driveways, and blank walls hiding parking makes for unpleasant and unsafe shopping areas. The required onsite parking adds considerable expense, is often underutilized, and tends to limit commercial development. Only patrons can use the parking, and because they come and go via the garage, they do not add to foot traffic. This limits opportunities for lingering and impulse purchases throughout the district because patrons only visit one business. For many storefront uses, our minimum parking requirement of at least three spaces per 1,000 square feet means that the square footage of parking is as large or larger than the square foot of usable space. Private parking wastes our limited commercially zoned land and drives up the cost of development. Parking generates considerably less real estate tax than commercial uses and therefore lowers the tax efficiency of commercial properties. Continued application of these onsite private parking requirements could eventually eviscerate our commercial areas as usable space is sacrificed for parking and the walkability of the area is destroyed. While the idea of minimum parking requirements seemed a reasonable response to the proliferation of autos, it is now understood in the urban planning profession to have been a terrible mistake, especially in walkable commercial areas. Public shared parking, on the other hand, facilitates foot traffic and street life. Much less parking is needed due to the fact that patrons can park once and visit multiple shops, services, and entertainment venues. In this way, the same parking resource is providing parking for a multitude of different destinations. Park once also significantly reduces traffic as the vehicle is not moving from store to store. Instead, the patron on foot is. Walkable compact commercial areas thrive when patrons arrive via transit, bike and walking, and if they arrive by car, by parking once. Our zoning bylaw has a provision that requires additional onsite parking if a change of use requires 15 percent more parking than the previous use, even when there is, in fact, no onsite parking. Town staff have described cases where a business owner must seek a special permit for relief from the parking requirements, or sometimes businesses do not expand or add more seats in the case of restaurants to avoid triggering a 15 percent increase. We've heard from a variety of commercial leasing agents and commercial property owners who all tell us that removing the parking minimums would be a welcome change for storefront uses. Our parking minimums, this is the chart from our zoning bylaw, require three to five parking spaces for every 1,000 square feet of usable retail or office space. These ratios are in line with parking counts done at suburban standalone sites where the only option is to drive. Therefore, our parking ratios do not account for existing use of public parking, transit, walking, and biking. So in addition to the negatives of private onsite parking, our current parking ratios are excessive for our transit districts. For new commercial development, it's better to evaluate each project's parking needs based on location and use. As you can see from this chart, for every special commercial zoning overlay district that we've done over the past decade, the parking minimums have either been eliminated completely or drastically reduced. One-size-fits-all parking minimums do not work. The storefront uses covered by this warrant article are all uses allowed in the G district, which could potentially occupy first or upper-floor commercial spaces. Banks were excluded to act as a small deterrent that might limit the number of new banks in our business districts. Medical marijuana, marijuana retailers, and childcare centers all have extensive site plan review, licensing, and permitting procedures done outside of zoning review. Childcare centers are unique in that they have a very low institutional parking requirement, which is reduced by two-thirds if the children are under 15, and the ZBA has an unlimited authority to grant full relief from any parking requirements. So what won't Article 15 do? It won't dictate the right amount of parking for new commercial development. It won't solve the problem of needing to manage our existing on-street parking better. And it will not allow for significant new commercial development because it is likely that other zoning changes, including increasing the floor area ratio, would be allowed for new commercial development. What will Article 15 do? It will make it easier to adapt and change a storefront business, possibly shortening vacancies. It will maintain the built form of our compact walkable commercial areas. It will support our businesses and enliven our sidewalks with public shared parking. It will continue to allow new commercial development to tailor parking to conditions. It will avoid prescribing an inappropriate parking solution. And it will enable the shared use of existing private parking areas. Article 15 has been overwhelmingly endorsed by the following groups. Please vote yes on Article 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waschinsky.
Good evening, Neil Waschinsky for the Advisory Committee. You've heard from Ms. Pelkey about the minimums, but the second thing that this warrant article does is setting maximum parking requirements in place of those minimums. With regard to the minimums, the Advisory Committee agreed with the petitioners that the numerical minimums currently in the zoning bylaw are arbitrary and unreasonable, and there's no evidentiary basis for continuing them. Removing them preserves and protects our existing street experience that is the essence of our commercial districts. Our focus really turned to the new maximums. The warrant article is swapping arguably arbitrary minimum requirements with also arguably arbitrary maximum requirements for the same storefront uses using the same numerical ratios. This may work in the more urban parts of town such as Coolidge Corner, but it may also possibly inhibit needed development in less urban parts of town that are not easily accessible by mass transit and walking, such as in Chestnut Hill along Route Nine. Setting maximum parking requirements is a major directional change in our zoning. And while that may, while that change may be desirable, some advisory members were of the view that it should be proposed only after a study of what maximum parking ratios make sense. Those concerns, however, about the maximums have been addressed by adding a provision in the motion before you that allows the zoning board of appeals to grant a special permit to exceed the maximum number of allowed parking spaces where it in fact makes sense. So by a vote of 26 to zero to one, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action.
So I will now allow a motion to the question if, okay, is there a second? I have the following speakers signed up, Mr. Franco, Sainer, Hyken, Englander, Dempsey, Milner Braggie, and Ananian. Those in favor of calling the question, terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion on the red rose-colored supplement that you've heard described by Ms. Pelkey and Mr. Waschinsky, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a vote of 199 to one. We now turn to Article 18. The motion, main motion under Article 18 is on page 18 dash three, to amend the zoning bylaw by amending the definition of lodger and so forth in the words of the motion, moved by Mr. Gladstone, seconded by Mr. Silverberg. The, there is a motion on page 18 dash 11 to refer the subject matter of Article 18 to the existing staff committee, which is currently developing regulations. That motion is made by Ms. Heller and Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Green, and seconded by Mr. Franco. Requires two-thirds vote, Mr. Gladstone.
No, I'm good. Scott Gladstone, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 16. There are currently over 400 listings in Brookline for short-term rentals like Airbnb. Many of those rentals are registered with Massachusetts, and as a consequence, Brookline is collecting taxes today on those rentals. The problem is that the building commissioner considers those short-term rentals to be illegal under Brookline zoning, except the zoning bylaw does not say what the commissioner wishes it says. Our current bylaw includes Use 51, which already allows the owner-occupier of a residential unit in every zoning district in Brookline to rent a spare bedroom to lodgers. The building commissioner interprets the word lodger in Use 51 to mean a lodger of 30 days or more. The problem is that the definition of lodger in the bylaw does not contain that time restriction. The first thing Article 18 does is to fix the definition of lodger so that it does mean for 30 days or more. The second thing Article 18 does is to create a new definition for short-term lodger and to create a new use where the same unit owner who can already rent to a long-term lodger under Use 51 can also have the right to rent to a short-term lodger. This new proposed use is the smallest possible example of short-term rental use with very stringent requirements. First, the requirement that it be owner-occupied, just as the current Use 51 says. It limits the number of guests at any one time, just as the current Use 51 does. We added the requirement of sleeping in the unit to avoid the problem of someone who is an owner-occupier most of the time but wishes to rent their unit while they are away in Florida for a couple of months. That is not allowed under Article 18 because of the sleeping requirement. This is an economic justice issue. Article 18 would give people another legal option to supplement their income. It allows people to better be able to age in place. I don't believe this will be a widespread use as only someone who really needs the money would invite a guest into their home while they are required to sleep in the same unit. The opposition says, how can you enforce the sleeping requirement? First, most people comply with the rules if they're aware of them. Second, currently, there are over 400 listed short-term rentals advertised in Brookline with no rules. Let's legalize and regulate. The opposition says, we don't want strangers in our building. Well, first, most condo documents already don't allow short-term rentals. And Article 18 would not change that. Second, the requirement that an owner or long-term tenant sleep in the unit means that there will always be an accountable, responsible adult in the unit. Opposition says, but you don't require inspections. Article 18 explicitly makes this new use subject to any town-imposed registration requirement and regulations, including inspections. Article 18 uses the same format as our current Use Seven regarding lodging houses, which establishes the use but says that the use will be subject to later-pass town bylaws. Also, Article 18 explicitly requires registration with the existing state registration system to ensure that the taxes are collected. Why not wait until spring when the town will bring their long-promised comprehensive scheme? Karen Martin was the Economic Developer staffer who has been tirelessly working on developing a comprehensive approach to short-term rentals to present to Town Meeting.
You have one minute.
Great. Unfortunately for the town... Unfortunately for the town, Karen left Brookline a week ago to pursue other opportunities. Will the ball be seamlessly picked up by others in time for the spring, or will other development issues facing the town take priority? Pass this now, and I bet we will see those proposed regulations in the spring. If we don't pass this fix now, then short-term rentals continue with no rules. Without passing Article 18, the ZBA will be asked to rule on the current language of the bylaw without the proposed language fix. I have one such case for a client, she might get the relief she is requesting for the ZBA to allow her short-term rental, but do we really want this to be done in such a patchwork manner? Let's pass Article 18 to legalize the most modest possible example of short-term rentals. Let's shine some light on the current Scoff law market and start to facilitate its regulation. Let's give fixed-income people the legal right to take in short-term lodgers. We already have Use 51. Let's bring it into the modern age. Vote against the referral and in favor of the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. And Mr. Silverberg, would you come forward, please?
Hello, Raul Fernandez for Unanimous Select Board. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Nancy Heller, who could not be here tonight. She sent in some words regarding our vote on this matter. This is from Nancy. The article proposes to address a zoning issue faced by petitioner's client. The proposal would allow short-term rentals where the dwelling is occupied by the owner, long-term tenant, or property manager who sleeps in the unit. While the Select Board is appreciative of the petitioner's efforts to address this serious issue, the Planning Department and other staff have formed a working group to draft a comprehensive set of proposals for the Spring 2020 Town Meeting. And we believe that the group should also be able, should be able to develop comprehensive proposals without the encumbrance of a small piece of the issue so that the topic of short-term rentals can be considered in the context of all the complexities of short-term rentals. We are also concerned that adopting this proposal could have unintended consequences, such as grandfathering if the proposals recommended by staff were more limited in scope than the warrant article before us. We are in favor of addressing this topic at the Spring 2020 Town Meeting, when we expect that Planning Staff and Planning Board will put before us a comprehensive proposal on this issue. Rather than voting no action, we actually opted to move that the subject matter of Article 18 be referred to the existing staff committee working on this issue. So we encourage you to please vote favorable action on the motion to refer, which is on page 18-11 of your books. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Silverberg here? Okay, Ms. Thayer, would you come forward and sit in the front row? In the meantime, we'll hear from Mr. Rodrigo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carlos Fidrejo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 14, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. As explained by the petitioner, Article 18 would allow Airbnb-type short-term rentals by amending the town zoning bylaws. The Advisory Committee extensively discussed this article and had the following concerns. Number one, the Advisory Committee has the view that some of the conditions for approval of short-term rentals, such as the owner must be sleeping in the unit while the, while being leased to short-term renters, is unworkable and unverifiable. We also felt that in an emergency, if an emergency were to arise in the building, the occupants of the short-term rental may not be alerted because of lack of clear knowledge of the existence of the rental or its occupants. There is no provision in Article 18 that the, that would subject short-term rental dwellings to types of health and safety regulations to which hotels and lodging houses have to adhere to. Additionally, there were concerns, there are concerns regarding short-term rental's ability to understand and act upon basic safety requirements in the event of an emergency, such as how to exit the premises in an event of fire. Hotels and other lodging, hotels are required to post such information in all guest rooms and are provided with other fire safety arrangements. In terms of housing availability and as a matter of town-wide public policy, we felt the need to carefully consider the potential impacts of housing availability in some, if some of our existing housing stock is converted to save, to serve tourists and not residents. We also have to evaluate the impact of our existing hotels, on our existing hotels, bed and breakfast inns, lodging houses, and et cetera, and its tax revenue. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, there are several efforts to regulate this type of use. The Commonwealth has recently taken action regulating short-term rentals. And in Brookline, staff from the Planning, Building, Health, and Fire Departments, along with the Select Board's Office, the Town Council's Office, have been working to develop a comprehensive set of short-term rental regulations. These regulations would be based on existing examples of best practices from nearby communities. The resulting zoning amendments from these, from this cooperative town effort is expected to be proposed at the Spring 2020 Annual Town Meeting. The ongoing process by the towns' departments includes significant outreach to the community in which, in our view, is necessary element to the process leading to a proposal of this type. Under Article 18, short-term rentals, if short-term rentals are allowed, are allowed in Brookline, any currently serving, any unit currently serving as its short-term rental would become grandfathered and under, sorry, become grandfathered. And even if regulations were to change in future, it would restrict such further, it would be, become grandfathered, even if you, if further, sorry, further use is restricted. Approving Article 18 would interfere with this work, and it would be bypass the necessary community outreach and listening that needs to occur in this issue. Because of the various town departments are, because various town departments are undertaking to address this issue more comprehensively than the solution offered by town by Article 18, the Advisory Committee felt the proposed bylaw change was premature and required additional thought. By an overwhelmingly vote of 24 in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention, the Advisory Committee recommends no action on Article 18.
Ms. Thayer, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Helene Thayer, and I live in Precinct 1. So I'm here because I had a really harrowing experience in 2017. I've been living in the same apartment since 1976 when I came as a renter. There was a developer who purchased it, and all the renters had the option of purchasing. But I was in school, and I didn't have a lot of money, so I decided, I did a lot of calculations and figured out if I quit school temporarily and got a job and got roommates, I would be able to buy it. And that's what I did. And I figured if I can't swing it, then I'll have to sell it. But 40 years later, I'm still here in the condo, always having roommates, always. And many have been wonderful, and some haven't been so wonderful. But then I got a couple in 2017. That was really a scary experience. First of all, he, I began noticing in like the first couple of weeks that the guy was rather belligerent, but fortunately, his girlfriend was able to calm him down and simmer him down. And then I discovered that he was pretty much doing pot all evening long in and out because it was a no smoking apartment, and he was pretty high all the time. But besides that, they began to be living in a very dirty fashion and not handling food well, and I was afraid that our rodent problem that we had just gotten under control with the Pest Control Service would re-arise. So I had a provision in my lease that could ask people to leave if I pay them a penalty, and the same thing, they could break the lease if they paid me a penalty. So when I invoked it, the woman left because she was planning to go to law school.
You have one minute.
And I think she didn't want to make any problems.
You have one minute, Ms. Thayer.
But what happened is that he stayed, and there was no one to simmer him down. And he, he was a scary person, as it turned out. I found out around that time that he had a very long criminal record of 30, 30 arrests, three of them assaults against women, two of them against women with whom he lived. And the state of Massachusetts has no provision for me as a, as a person who lives in the same space as a tenant to expedite the eviction, or at least not appreciably so. So I was forced to live with this guy, and after he finally did leave, I was afraid to rent for a really long time, until finally, I bumped into someone who told me about Airbnb, which I had always thought was a scary, dangerous thing to do. But I learned it isn't. There are so many ways to make rules, to make sure that people behave. They're going to get a bad review, they won't be able to come back, and I have very, very explicit rules to make sure that neighbors are not disturbed, so.
Please conclude, Ms. Thayer.
There is, there's just the two items, that there's ways to make it safe, and there's ways to make it work for the, the people in the building, too.
Thank you. Mr. Heiken? And Mr. Gertler, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Heiken for the Planning Board. Short-term rentals have been and will continue to be a rapidly growing use. They are generally desirable in that they provide an additional source of income to residents who have space to rent out and need the additional income to be able to afford to stay in town. But they can also produce a number of undesirable impacts for neighbors, we just heard about one, such as late-night disturbances due to noise and mix-ups on the correct location of the short-term rental. So establishing reasonable and enforceable regulations for short-term rentals is an important and time-sensitive endeavor that, more importantly, requires a comprehensive approach involving widespread community input. The current proposal falls short of this standard. It has not involved any community input and is overly simplistic and narrow in its solution. So therefore, the Planning Board recommends no action on Article 18, and recommends that the town allow the Planning Department and Building Department staffs to continue to pursue their efforts on short-term rentals to produce a bylaw for Spring Town Meeting, and prior to that, not take any action on this current proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gertler and Mr. Milner Braggie, please come forward.
Thanks. I'm just going to deal with this from here because I will be very, very short. Nicholas Gertler, Precinct 11. First of all, I think this is generally a very good idea. One way to make it more affordable to live somewhere is to allow people to split the cost of living in that place, and this seems to do that. In terms of the implementation, I would suggest that specifically, language and eligibility should be conditioned on someone sleeping in the unit. The town shouldn't be in the business of checking around where someone is or is not sleeping, but perhaps to phrase it as primary residence. Thanks.
Mr. Milner Braggie?
I cede my time. Thank you.
Hello, Linda Olson Pelkey, Precinct 2. I am recommending that we have no action on Warren Article 18 for the following reasons. The article seeks to limit short-term rentals to those properties where there's an owner occupier, and where the owner must be sleeping in the home or unit while it's being leased. While in theory, the presence of the owner would hopefully tamp down on errant behavior, it will be impossible to establish whether or not the owner was present during the rental should a complaint arise. In other words, these conditions are unenforceable and unworkable. Permitting short-term rentals in all residential districts is highly problematic and not well-thought-out. For instance, as a condominium trustee, I've heard of many potential problems with short-term rentals in a condominium context. Most dramatically, I've learned of cases where an emergency arises at a building and the occupants of the short-term rental cannot be alerted because property management has no idea of the rental or the occupants. Legal experts have alerted condominium boards to the need for very high levels of liability insurance that would be required for the unit owner seeking to do short-term rentals. Inequitable demand on common services, trash, water, heat, et cetera, would arise by allowing short-term rentals, not to mention the potential for damage to common area property. Then there are the safety and quality of life issues that arise from admitting transient strangers into residential properties with common entrances, et cetera. As a matter of town-wide public policy, we need to carefully consider the potential impacts of housing availability and housing costs if some of our existing housing stock is converted to serve tourists and not residents. Also, short-term rentals will cannibalize the clientele and therefore tax revenue of our existing hotels, bed and breakfast inns, lodging houses, et cetera. Similar to the end-run around taxi regulations that Uber did, short-term rental technology facilitates an end-run around fire, safety, and licensing regulations. Passing this now would grandfather all currently operating short-term rentals. This would make any future efforts by the town to regulate and oversee short-term rentals moot. The Planning Department is doing a great job of studying this complex regulatory problem, and they should be allowed to continue gathering feedback, working across departments, et cetera, to make a comprehensive proposal for future consideration. Approving Warren Article 18 would interfere with this work, and it would bypass the necessary community outreach and listening that still needs to occur on this issue. We need to hear from as many residents as possible, as the potential impact to our neighborhoods from short-term rentals is significant. That outreach and listening is still yet to occur. Please vote no on Warren Article 18. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frawley.
Thank you, Regina Frawley from Precinct 16, from Russett Road, the same as Scott Gladstone. And I've run my, this problem, this proposal, which is a problem, by several seniors from the South Brookline Senior Social, and they oppose you totally. They want the ability to have people very briefly in their home, usually on a listserv, a neighborhood listserv, where they'll say, we're having a bar mitzvah or a wedding, can somebody take somebody for the week? And they earn a little money, and that works out. But it also can provide, if someone were to come for a month, it provides people to be able to go away. It gives them the vacation money. So they're not happy with this. I'm not usually happy with an administrative referral, but, and I hope they'll be reaching out to me from the department so that I can attend the meetings. But I definitely oppose this article, and so do the seniors in South Brookline that I consulted. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now, no reason to call the question, there's no one else signed up to speak, and no one's at the microphones. So we will proceed to vote on the motion to refer the subject matter of this article to the existing staff committee that's working on regulations. If that motion passes, we will move on to the next article. If it fails, we'll vote on Mr. Gladstone's main motion. On the motion to refer, those in favor, please raise your hands.
There was a request for a recorded vote.
I'm sorry?
I heard also a request for a recorded vote.
I, I heard no one requested recorded vote. Okay. All right. The request has been made for a recorded vote. There are 35 town meeting members that want a recorded vote, will have one, and they're, as usual, are. So this is on Article 18, motion to refer. And press one if you vote in favor of a referral, which will mean you won't get to the main motion. Two, if you're opposed to the referral. Three, if you abstain. motion; 2, if you're opposed to the referral; 3, if you abstain. Motion carries by a vote of 173 in favor, 21 opposed, and 4 abstentions. The motion under Article 31 is at the bottom of the green, page 3 of the Green Supplement, over to page 6 of the Green Supplement. It's moved by Mr. Milner Braggy, seconded by Mr. Englander, that the town adopt a resolution relating to climate change. This is an article as similar to Article 15. No opposition, and I will have, the presenters present, explain, and then I'll take a motion for the question. Mr. Milner Braggy, and Mr. Englander, and Ms. Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jules Milner Braggy, a Precinct 12 Town Meeting Member. Thanks, Scott. Is this better? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jules Milner Braggy, a Precinct 12 Town Meeting Member and co-petitioner of Article 31, a resolution to respond to climate change by prioritizing health, access, and equity on Brookline's public ways. It was submitted by 11 co-petitioners in total and authored by an even larger group of contributors as an outgrowth of this past June's Townwide Sustainability and Climate Action Summit. We're moving the lightly-edited version incorporating clarification suggested by the Advisory Committee. On the second night of this town meeting, Select Board Member Heller commented on our response to the scale and urgency of the climate crisis and quoted Julie McNamara of the Union of Concerned Scientists, who stressed the need to, quote, "shift our thinking from incremental to transformative." We agree, and this resolution envisions such a transformation in thinking about transportation and land use in Brookline. By embracing our town's history as a place substantially developed at a walkable, bikeable, mass-transit-servable scale oriented around electric trolleys in the 19th and early 20th centuries; by measuring the transport function of our public ways in terms of moving people independent of vehicles, and then prioritizing safe support for travel modes that do this efficiently, affordably, inclusively, and, when motorized, via electric power; and by beginning our exploration of how precisely to reintegrate this focus on people movement and electric power in our transportation systems for the 21st century through demonstrations and inexpensive trials.
Susan Helms Daley, co-petitioner. Forty-three percent of greenhouse gas emissions in Massachusetts stem from transportation, chiefly automobiles. Electric vehicles are a necessary part of the solution but not sufficient. Our roads are at capacity, and individual car ownership is cost prohibitive to many. Equity and access for people of all ages, abilities, and financial means are at the heart of this resolution. Representative Ayanna Pressley recently wrote, quote, "Advancing mobility for some has been furthered at the expense of others. To tackle our climate crisis and ensure that everyone has a shot at socioeconomic mobility, we need to make sure our transportation policies allow us to go further together as a society," end quote. Did you know that 63% of MBTA bus riders are women? Or that black bus riders spend 64 more hours per year on MBTA buses compared to white passengers? Commute time was found to be the most significant factor in civic participation, resulting in people with longer commutes being underrepresented in municipal decision-making. People making less than $25,000 per year are twice as likely to bike to work as higher-income earners. And a lot of people who do rely on driving for lack of other choices can't really afford their cars. Transportation accounts for 40% of the income of people in poverty. Our transportation options and choices also affect our health. Asthma, diabetes, heart disease, obesity, stress and anxiety, depression and isolation, and traffic fatalities are all on the rise. All are linked to automobile use, all are higher in communities of color or among seniors, and all measurably decrease when communities become more walkable, bikeable, and teable.
Scott Englander, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and co-petitioner. This resolution sets the table for further community discussion about how to adopt practices and goals like those being embraced by our forward-thinking peer communities throughout the U.S. and Canada. Specifically, by passing Article 31, we'd be resolving to prioritize people, demonstrate designs, align regulations, and electrify motorized vehicles. To measure progress on integrating and applying these four high-level strategies against goals for 2030 and 2050, consistent with Brookline's carbon reduction goal, to provide support for achieving that progress, and finally, this resolution asks the Select Board to evaluate and report back by May 2020 Town Meeting on how the town can begin to apply these strategies and grapple with these goals. So, please join us, along with the Select Board, Advisory Committee, Transportation Board, Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, Green Caucus of Town Meeting, Brookline Community Aging Network, Climate Action Brookline, Brookline Green Space Alliance, and Brookline PACs, in voting favorable action on Article 31. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Khan, you have three minutes.
Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15, speaking for a near-unanimous Advisory Committee in favor of this article. Article 31 is noted as one of the outcomes of the Select Board Climate Action Summit held in June of this year, and one of half a dozen articles on the current warrant designed to address a looming climate catastrophe. It is a resolution asking that the town address the negative effects that fossil-fuel-powered transportation has on climate change. The article seeks to develop a comprehensive plan, which would include reducing the use of gas-powered, single-occupancy vehicles, encouraging electric vehicles, and improving public ways for non-vehicular use, including walking, biking, and other mobility options. The requirements of residents with mobility issues, particularly seniors and those with disabilities, will also have to be taken into account when redesigning streets, especially in dense North Brookline where a majority of seniors live. The warrant article seeks to coordinate efforts and draw together different town departments in a focused approach to combating climate change. One of the petitioners noted that the resolution is not prescriptive, rather it lays out a framework. This is a first step. The Advisory Committee discussion focused, not surprisingly, on financial impacts on the town's resources. It is estimated that hiring a sustainable transportation engineer or planner, which is requested in the warrant article, would cost approximately $82,000 plus benefits. Given current budgetary constraints, the members of the Advisory Committee were not persuaded that this position would be funded anytime soon through the annual budgeting process. Transportation Administrator Todd Corain has indicated that he would also need more staff to carry out the provisions of the article. There is considerable competition for additional positions throughout town departments, and the town is facing significant structural budget deficits in the coming years.
You have one minute.
Thank you. The recent resignation of the town's only employee solely responsible for coordinating the many sustainability initiatives in Brookline is a consequence of inadequate, partially a consequence of inadequate, funding for support staff. The calls from some town meeting members to increase the position salary and provide staff costs money, which has to be part of a comprehensive budget analysis. That said, this is a resolution and not a bylaw, and the town can work to implement it over time as resources allow. The Advisory Committee made some small changes in the resolution. One, recognizing that budget implications of this article need to be discussed within the annual budget process; and two, focusing responsibility on the Select Board to engage in an inclusive process to determine a course of action going forward. By a vote of 17 in favor, 1 opposed, and 2 abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article 31. Thank you.
I will allow a motion for the question. Is there a second? Okay, I have the following people signed up, all speaking in favor of the main motion. Ms. Pelkey, Mr. Ananian, Mr. Dempsey, Ms. Vanderzeel, and Ms. Neufind. On the motion for the question, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the main motion on the Green Supplement, pages 3 through 6...
You want a recorded vote?
Really? Okay. Are there 35 town meeting members who want a recorded vote? I'm not so sure there are. Please raise your hands and keep them up until I count. Oh, we'll have a recorded vote. What the hell. This is Article 31, main motion. A yes vote is in favor of the resolution at the bottom of page 3 of the supplement. Number 2 is a no vote, and 3 is an abstention. We're voting on the main motion under Article 31, pages 3 through 6 of the Green Supplement. That motion carries by a vote of 192 in favor, 1 opposed, and 4 abstentions. We now move to Article 16. The, if you'll turn to page 16-3, the motion at the top of page 16-3 is the main motion with one deletion. And that is to delete paragraph, subparaphrase 1, and the words "and," and the 2 in parentheses. So it reads, "Until such time as the Transportation Board holds public hearings, et cetera." That's moved by Ms. Hamilton, seconded by Mr. Warren. The Advisory Committee would replace the deleted language, so that the main motion is without the language that was deleted, and the Advisory Committee would move to restore that language. It's moved by Ms. Granoff and seconded by Mr. Sandman. And Mr. Ananian, I see you're pleased.
Good evening. Paul Warren, Precinct 1. Is he going to stay still for me? And along with Heather Hamilton, select person Heather Hamilton, I'm a co-petitioner for Warren Article 16. Brookline's e-Scooter Pilot Program was launched to help the town collect information and data to evaluate the benefits and costs of proceeding with a permanent program. The pilot results indicate strong demand and replaced automobile trips that appear to be consistent with reports by other communities that have deployed shared e-scooter services. The pilot program has also highlighted a number of challenges that are also consistent with national media reports. In particular, the operation and random parking of scooters on sidewalks has raised safety concerns with pedestrians, and in particular, the elderly, disabled, and the very young. As the popularity of micro-mobility grows, and I include e-scooters in this term, there will be an increasing number of these devices, both shared and privately owned, on our public ways. Even if Brookline chooses to not contract with a vendor to offer rental locations in Brookline, these devices are coming regardless of what we do. They will be driven into Brookline across the BU Bridge, across Park Drive, on Beacon, down Comm Ave from Newton. Getting our regulatory house in order is an important early step to safely integrating these devices onto our public ways. At the state level, e-scooters are covered under Mass General Law Chapter 90. Chapter 90, Section 1E, requires that motorized scooters have a turn signal, and that operators possess a valid driver's license or learner's permit, and that operators wear a helmet. These regulations were enacted before the development of shared micro-mobility services, and the regulations are outdated. In an effort to update the law, several bills have been introduced at the state level, including one by the governor, another sponsored by Reps Moran and Vitolo, and several other bills by various representatives. The bills cover a wide range of issues, including equipment requirements, insurance, taxes, helmets, and sidewalk operation. At the local level, the Transportation Board has exclusive jurisdiction and authority to regulate our sidewalks. In fact, I had originally filed this warrant article as a modification to our existing sidewalk bylaw. It was informed by Town Council that Town Meeting does not have the authority to change the laws governing our sidewalks. This exclusive regulatory right sits with our Transportation Board, and to date, the Transportation Board has not held public hearings nor developed rules and regulations to govern these devices on our public ways. This warrant article does not take a position on whether shared e-scooter services should be permanently deployed in Brookline. I trust that the Select Board will hold public hearings to make that determination. What it does do is ask the Select Board to postpone such a decision until our regulations can catch up with the technology. Specifically, the first resolution of this warrant article, as amended, asks the Select Board to postpone additional piloting or the permanent deployment of e-scooters until the Brookline Transportation Board holds public hearings and develops regulations to govern their use, the use of these devices. The second resolution of this warrant article urges our state legislative delegation to work with the state legislature to ensure that in any legislation that is passed, that Brookline retains local control of its sidewalks with respect to the operation and use of these devices. I do want to emphasize something. Setting regulations is not the end of this issue. It is just the start. We also need follow-on investments in enforcement, education, and infrastructure. An important step in that direction was just approved by Warren Article 31. In closing, I want to share a quick story with you. I was once an avid cyclist. I rode my bike everywhere. All that stopped five years ago when I was taken by ambulance to Beth Israel Hospital after being hit by an out-of-state motorist. I was riding my bike in a poorly-configured roadway with no clearly-marked or protected bike lane, and the driver was in an unfamiliar urban environment. The driver suffered from the experience of having hitting me. I have not ridden a bike since that incident, not because of the physical damage, but because of the psychological damage that was done. It destroyed my confidence on a bike. Now imagine the impact that a collision with a moving scooter or damaging fall due to an improperly-parked scooter must have on the elderly, disabled, or the very young pedestrian. I have many choices on how I travel. For many in Brookline, walking is the only choice. When we take away the confidence of these groups to navigate familiar and once-safe pathways by not protecting our sidewalks, we limit their freedom and risk their safety. Warren Article 16 was born out of a desire to protect pedestrians. It is my hope that the Transportation Board will hold multiple public hearings and encourage robust community engagement as it develops rules and regulations that consider and protect all users of our public ways. I would also expect that the Transportation Board will consider the pending state legislation and incorporate those relevant provisions that are most likely to pass. Without such public engagement and consideration, I fear that we will be revisiting this topic again next year. Warren Article 16 puts Brookline on a path...
Please conclude, sir.
Yes, sir. Warren Article 16 puts Brookline on a path of keeping everyone healthy and... Warren Article 16 puts Brookline on a path of keeping everyone healthy and safe. Please vote yes on the consensus resolution that includes the Madison Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nanyian. Well, then we'll hear from Ms. Granoff. You're next, Ms. Granoff. And Mr. Madison, you'll be next. You are a versatile town administrator.
Is this in your job description? Great. Thank you, Mr. Administrator and Mr. Moderator. I'm Susan Granoff, Precinct Seven, speaking for the Advisory Committee, which voted favorable action on the original unamended Warren Article 16 by a near unanimous vote of twenty-four in favor with zero opposed and one abstention. The Advisory Committee rejected the Madison Amendment by a vote of seven to fourteen to zero. The Advisory Committee supports the original Warren Article 16 and not the amended main motion because it strongly agrees with what the petitioners originally said, that the Select Board should hold off on any decisions it might make with respect to adopting any Brookline programs, including pilot programs, related to rental e-scooters until after both Brookline's Transportation Board and the state legislature have enacted up-to-date regulations for the use, operation, and parking of these devices. The original Warren Article 16 is a common sense article. It simply seeks a pause, a moratorium, to give the state and the Transportation Board the time needed to pass new laws and regulations, and to give the town the time it needs to thoroughly assess the lessons learned from the pilot program that just ended a couple of weeks ago, and to come up with solutions to the numerous, serious problems and concerns described by the overwhelming number of Brookline residents who spoke at the public hearing on Warren Article 16. The current main motion is a watered-down truncated version of the original Warren Article that was never presented for public comment at the public hearing. This does not, the Madison Amendment does away with any genuine pause or moratorium, and as explained by Mr. Madison, the purpose is to fast-track a rental e-scooter program in Brookline by this spring, well before the state legislature has had an opportunity to update state legislation regulating e-scooter usage in Massachusetts. In contrast to the main motion, the motion that is proposed by the warrant, by the Advisory Committee recognizes that existing state laws, which were enacted decades ago, are entirely inadequate for regulating the way that modern rental e-scooters are actually used in our communities today. These out-of-date laws have led to confusion, inconsistent and inadequate enforcement, and dangers to public safety, especially of pedestrians and people with disabilities, as our recently concluded pilot program has shown. It makes sense to hit the pause button while critically needed laws are updated at both the state and local levels. This is exactly what petitioner Warren told us at the public hearing on the original Warren Article. The current main motion does not do this. There are now several bills seeking to revise e-scooter laws in the state legislature. By waiting until new state laws have been enacted before approving any new e-scooter programs, the town would make certain that any regulations the Transportation Board passed did not conflict with these new state laws and cause still more confusion.
You have one minute.
The current main motion does not do this. Second reason is to allow the town to make informed decisions related to future e-scooter programs in Brookline, and specifically, to carefully evaluate the benefits, costs, and operational and budgeting needs of any future rental e-scooter programs. Rushing ahead to quickly pass the new Transportation Board regulations so as to start a second rental e-scooter pilot program this spring is irresponsible and terribly timed. In light of the increased regulatory enforcement burdens our police department will face this spring in the neighborhoods with marijuana retailers, as we learned, this will place an enormous burden on the police department. The impact funding fee will provide no additional funding for police enforcement of e-scooter regulations, and without rigorous police enforcement, whatever new regulations that are passed by the Transportation Board will be meaningless, and the safety of our pedestrians and people with disabilities will continue to be put at risk by e-scooters. If you vote in favor of the current main motion, you'll be voting in favor of irresponsibly rushing ahead with a new pilot e-scooter program this spring, when our police force will lack the capacity or funding to regulate the program, and when the state will not have an opportunity to pass the new laws that are required. For all of these reasons, the Advisory Committee urges that Town Meeting vote favorable action on the original version of Warren Article 16 and no action on the main motion.
Okay, we'll hear next from Ms. Hamilton, then Mr. Harris, then Mr. Madison.
Thank you. Heather Hamilton, speaking on behalf of the Select Board. On Friday, November fifteenth, Brookline's e-scooter pilot program came to an end. During the seven months that we conducted the pilot program, we have learned a lot from about potential demand, behavior, and challenges that accompany a potential permanent implementation of such a program. I appreciate the support that the Madison Amendment gives us in our ability to move forward without waiting on the state. There were a number of times I second-guessed myself throughout the pilot program, especially in those first weeks. I am deeply grateful for the validation that experimentation is valued and appreciated here in Brookline. We learned a lot through this pilot program. I look forward to working with the Transportation Board to develop a robust public process that can inform the Select Board on how to manage a longer-term program in the future. The Select Board moves favorable action on the main motion in a vote of three to two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Moderator, may I have a point of order, please?
Sure.
I was aware of Hugh Madison's likely amendment, but I don't think I got it prior to the meeting, and I gathered from Diana Spiegel that she got it. I don't know how many people in the room know what's being discussed right now.
The Madison Amendment is on the, on the orange supplement, which was it, the most recent mailing?
Diana got it in the mail, but I didn't. Are there extra copies in the room, you ask?
Well, everyone turned to page sixteen dash three. At the top, there is a motion. The motion is that of the, essentially that of the Advisory Committee, and Mr. Madison would delete paragraph one from that motion, and correspondingly would delete the words "and" and the word "the number two."
I thought it was just clause one.
Well, clause one, yes.
Clause one, not paragraph one.
Well, it's all right. Clause one. There are two numbered clauses, and Mr. Madison would delete the first clause. Is that clear to you?
Just number one.
I've seen it already, so, and I support it, but my question is, are there extra copies so people could have it in the room? But maybe not. There used to be extras on things, but...
Well, these were, Ms. Goff here? They were mailed on Monday.
Right, but a number of people don't have it.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. Moderator, Rebecca Mountner, TME member, Precinct 11. I'm wondering if we could put the proposed text up on the screen, because a lot of us have not seen it previously.
I don't think they can do that.
I'm sorry we can't, Ms. Mountner. But...
Thank you for my, entertaining my question.
It's, I think the simplest way to do this is to look at the motion at the top of page sixteen dash three, which you all have, and Mr. Madison would strike clause one. Mr. Harris.
Thank you. John Harris, Precinct Eight. I'd like to start by thanking Heather Hamilton, Chris Dempsey, and Todd Corain for initiating and overseeing Brookline's Pioneer e-scooter share pilot program. Demand has been, yes, absolutely. Demand has been huge. We've learned a lot. Now let's listen to everybody's feedback and apply what we've learned. If we do this right, micro-mobility, and in this case, scooters, will become as benign and non-threatening on our roads as electric golf carts and adult tricycles are in retirement communities in Florida. And I mean that. I'm quite serious. I hope you will join Brookline PACs, the Green Caucus, and me in opposing ceding control of this issue to the state legislature, because, in spite of diligent work by our local representatives, we have no idea when the state will act on it, and in fact, they may never act on it, given other priorities. Please vote yes on the main motion, which is the Madison Amendment. I'm going to skip around a lot because some of, especially Warren Article 13, my environmental concerns were addressed then. This will sound disjointed, but it's points that have not yet been made. One of the major solutions that e-scooter share provides is the issue of equity. For the rider, you can rent or share a scooter for a few dollars per ride with substantial discounts for low-income folks. Cost effectiveness for the town. We are at the point we should be doing an environmental and financial cost-benefit analysis of various proposed solutions to the climate crisis. For each proposal, we should look at how great a greenhouse gas reduction, in what timeline, what is the environmental cost if we don't do it, at what financial cost if we do it, and who pays for it. I propose that micro-mobility, in this case, scooters, offers us a huge bang for the buck. It's at very low cost to the taxpayers of Brookline because the rollout costs are borne by the scooter-share companies and their investors. Another point, scootering is technologically incredibly easy to implement because scooters plug into regular 110-volt household outlets, so they don't require the extensive upgraded electrical plugs required for EVs, as we have heard and will hear with another Warren article later this session.
Let's hope.
Yeah, maybe tonight. Okay. Skipping quite, oh, here's a good one. Two nights ago, the Boston Globe held a symposium at Faneuil Hall following up on the Spotlight story regarding Boston's terrible congestion problem. As he introduced the event, Globe editor Brian McCrory told us he asked the Spotlight team what would solve the congestion problem. His answer: Get people out of cars. A recent study found that forty-nine percent of all automobile trips in the Boston area are less than three miles. That's perfect scooting distance. Since we're so close to Harvard Square, Central, Kendall, Kenmore, Back Bay, downtown, and the Seaport District, where so many of us work or go to school, Brookline is well situated so large numbers of us can scoot instead of driving. User surveys in Portland, Oregon, North Carolina, and Brookline have found that about a third of users scoot instead of driving or Lyft or Uber. A concerted campaign by the town transportation, health, and planning departments, and by local environment, local advocacy groups, encouraging people to leave their cars at home, as the Globe Spotlight team suggests, and scoot instead, could significantly increase that percentage. Note that if you are a car person, scooters are not an either-or decision. You can join scooter share when it resumes, and then decide which scooter or car is more appropriate for that day's trip. Of course, folks have different tolerances for scooting in rain, cold, or snow. Sometimes you have too far to go, or you have too much stuff to carry, or too many people to carry, to scoot. But note that each trip you do not take by car means fewer emissions of greenhouse gases and particulates, and a relief, a huge relief to the congestion problem. Continuing to skip.
Well, you have about one minute.
Thank you. On Monday, Hugh and I met with the Livable Communities Advocacy Committee at the Brookline Senior Center. We found to our surprise that, for at least some of the seniors, the concern was that the proposed state bills might even be too lenient. We, I'm not sure they believed us, but it is true that we have offered to bridge the current divide between pedestrians, seniors, and advocates for the disabled on the one hand, and environmentalists and bike safety people on the other. Both groups want our roads to be safe and convenient for everybody. Let's start putting our heads together. We will have a far better chance of designing a program that meets the needs of everybody if we design it together, ourselves as neighbors. In fact, if we resume our leadership, Brookline may be able to influence the development of micro-mobility worldwide, such ideas as offering scooters with seats, parking the scooters in corrals instead of on the sidewalk. I would offer my own driveway, as a matter of fact, for that. Requiring companies to provide liability insurance, requiring riders to have either a driver's license or state IDs, and then work to ensure safety of both pedestrians and micro-mode people.
Please conclude.
In conclusion, we will get better results if a lot of us consider alternatives to cars, in this case, scooting, when that is the best option. We want to design a program that everyone is comfortable with and would consider joining. I urge you to vote yes on the main motion, including the Madison Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. All further speakers will have three minutes.
Good evening. Hugh Madison, Precinct Five. My amendment eliminates the first provision asking the Select Board not to continue any micro-mobility pilot programs. The second resolution asking the legislature that Brookline retain control to regulate its sidewalks would remain. We have been leaders in the state in the use of electric scooters, and we have momentum. We have learned a lot, and that is what a pilot program is really for. If we slam the door on pilot programs now, there is no certainty that the state will deal with guidelines in the near future. In fact, I've heard there are so many bills in the legislature, it'll take time to sort through them. When the state does act, Brookline will then have to start all over again educating users. Seated scooters, much more suitable for older users, would expand the user community substantially. One requirement of a new pilot program could be for Lime and Bird to offer these seated scooters. It seems ironic that a number of Warren articles are dealing with eliminating use of fossil fuels and climate change. Without this amendment, Article 16 would actually delay the use of fossil-free vehicles until the state issues guidelines, and there is no certainty when this will occur. At the same time, renewing a pilot program in the spring will cost nothing and continue the progress we have already made, and of course, it doesn't have to be in the spring. The configuration of e-scooters, including seated versions, and battery technology is evolving rapidly. Brookline should continue as a leader in this sustainable form of transportation, which offers some potential for reducing the use of fossil fuels and reducing traffic congestion. If you agree, please support my amendment to Article 16. Thank you.
And then we'll take questions from the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Dempsey, the Chair of the Brookline Transportation Board, and a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. So the Transportation Board voted to support this Warren article in October. That was before the Madison Amendment, and we have not had the opportunity to take a vote or have a discussion since that, so I want folks to be clear that the Board supports this Warren article broadly, but we do not have an opinion either way on the specifics of the Madison Amendment. But let me take some time tonight to just talk about how I think the Transportation Board has approached this issue of e-scooters, because it's been referenced a few times by some other speakers. I think we have been, the Transportation Board has been very cautious on this issue, and I actually would echo or refer to Mr. Warren's remarks that we have not issued regulations on, on e-scooters, and that is a responsibility that we have. But we also felt... But we also felt that we wanted to work in partnership with the Select Board and others who wanted to see the pilot, wanted to have that advance, and use that as an opportunity for all of us to learn about how these could impact town. As part of that partnership, I chaired with Select Board Member Hamilton two public meetings that were very well attended and actually covered by, by regional media in both cases, to hear from many of you and many of our constituents across town about whether these were working or not. And I think it is very fair to say that their reaction was mixed, that there are big fans of, of these, and there are opponents, and there are a whole bunch of people in the middle, too. And so I want to assure folks that the Transportation Board is not in a rush in any way to bring back a pilot on e-scooters. We were not the, the origin of, of the first pilot, and we are not in a rush to bring back the pilot. Any pilot would be the Select Board's responsibility, because that's a licensing issue. The regulation issue is one that we are going to need to address as the Transportation Board. We look forward to doing that. We will probably start that process before there is state legislation, because it's an important conversation. I don't know if we will conclude it before state legislation passes, because it's not clear if the legislature will make a decision on micro mobility projects or, or scooters like this before they conclude their session on July thirty-first, 2020. So, there are some questions, but I do want to assure people that we are not in a rush to, at the Transportation Board level, to bring back a pilot very quickly as soon as the snow melts in the spring. And I do want to then just remind you and reiterate that we did vote to support Warren Article sixteen, the complete language, before the suggestion of any amendments. And happy to take any questions that folks may have from the floor, if there are any. Thank you.
Why don't you take a seat in the front row? You may have some questions. I'm going to call on Mr. Nannian, whose position was high on the speaker's list, but I thought he was, he ceded it to Mr. Madison, but he obviously wants to...
Yeah, I do apologize that there was a little bit of confusion in that I wasn't aware that the Advisory Committee was, ooh, boy, wow, still making a motion. And so, just as a point for clarification, Mr. Moderator...
You should identify yourselves.
Oh, sorry. Scott Nannian, Precinct ten. When we're talking about the Madison Amendment, what we're actually talking about is the opposite. As I understand it, Mr. Madison's amendment has been adopted by the Select Board and the petitioners, so it's only the Advisory Committee which is making the motion amendment. And so, I had deferred because I thought it odd to be speaking before Mr. Madison presented his amendment, but in fact, I was a little bit confused. I'll just leave that down. So, briefly, I support the concerns about scooters' impacts on pedestrians. I, I think this is something that we can do for ourselves here in Brookline. We can make bylaws and empower our police to enforce them. We can work with the Transportation Board to regulate our sidewalks. And I look forward to working on such boards and Warren articles before scooters are brought back to Brookline, and maybe standing again before you in the spring or fall, talking about those initiatives. But I don't think that we can or should wait for the state to act. We have no guarantee that the state will regulate scooters the way we would like. They could easily decide to regulate them the same as bicycles, for example. That is, no helmet requirements for adults, no designated docking areas, no restrictions on riding on sidewalks outside commercial zones, dot, dot, dot. What we need to do is make our rules for ourselves here in Brookline the way that we want them to be. Note that after the pilot, I, I did, I tried them as a dutiful town meeting member. I wanted to see what they were about for myself, and I did find them useful enough getting from home to my kid's school or down to Town Hall, that I bought one myself. So, while the scooter pilot has ended, there is at present no rules for folks like me who own private scooters. All we've done to make scooters available only to more affluent people who can afford to buy them, we've denied them to people who can only rent. So, we need to address this. We need to address what the actual rules for scooters in Brookline should be. The Madison Amendment merely strikes one clause to ensure we maintain local control, flipping that away, because it's now apparently the Advisory Committee Amendment. The Advisory Committee Amendment adds a clause that cedes local control to some state process that we're not in control of, and we have no idea when it's going to be done or what rules they're actually going to make.
Yeah, one, one minute.
Thank you. So, let's take the time to figure out how to make scooters work in Brookline, and not bring them back until we have, but not pretend the state is going to make rules to our tastes. I support the petitioner's motion, the Madison Amendment, petitioner's motion, the Select Board motion, and oppose the Advisory Committee Amendment to the Warren article. The main motion now, supported by Mr. Madison and the Select Board, is consistent with the recommendations of PACs and the Green Caucus, and please vote favorable action on that and against the Advisory Committee motion, amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Silbaugh, Town Meeting Member, number, Precinct one. I just want to say first that I, I love the scooters. I use them all the time. I'm a huge supporter of the scooters. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that, I mean, you know, you'd have to really be asleep not to notice that they've caused a lot of people, a lot of consternation. And it's in that light that I just want to talk about the fact that this is a resolution and not a bylaw. So, that all that matters is that we vote yes on one or the other of these things, because I think many residents who are not involved in town government, their experiences, the scooters showed up, I knew nothing about them, it's been, they have certain chaotic experiences with them, and they just want to know that we're going to be more systematic and figure out what the right way is to integrate the scooters, whether we do it before the state or after the state. It's a way of saying to the residents of the town that those of us who love the scooters, like me, and those who don't love the scooters are all committed to the idea that we're just going to get this organized, and we're going to let them know out of this town meeting that that's going to happen. I just want to say, I think I'm going to vote against the Madison Amendment, partly because this is a resolution. And here's why. As someone who uses them all the time, I'm very frustrated by the fact that when you get to the edge of Brookline, you know, you can't take the scooter out of Brookline under the current pilot, you couldn't. And I really could, I felt the jurisdictional boundary, and I would like there to be a coordinated state response. That said, I think Hugh's, of course, right, that the state could take so long that that could really tie us up. But great, it's a resolution. So, the Select Board, you know, in the, in the Transportation Board, if the state takes two years on this, they can ignore the resolution and go ahead and pass rules. I assume whichever version passes, the Transportation Board is going to start researching how they ought to be handling this. So, it doesn't matter that much which we vote for, but I think it's important that we vote yes on one of them.
Mr. Miller.
Bob Miller, Town Meeting Member, Precinct eight. I had a question, I'm not sure anyone can answer, but I had done some research online, and micro mobility includes bicycles, according to some definitions, and I'm wondering if this has an effect on the Blue Bikes program, since it says, or other micro mobility pilot programs.
Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
The short answer is, the Blue Bikes program is a contractual relationship that we belong to, and it's not a pilot.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Brian Hockleitner, Precinct six. I guess I have a question. I don't know if this is for Town Council, or if someone else has the answer, but...
Why don't you just ask it?
There's a paragraph in here in the, in the Advisory Committee report which makes it pretty clear that there actually is state law that exists that regulates motorized scooters, and it seems to fit the definition of our scooters. And it actually requires, among other things, brake lights and turn signals, which I'm pretty sure our scooters didn't have. I actually rode them quite a bit, and I felt sort of like, is this legal? So, I'm wondering if someone has an answer to that, and how we, in fact, entered into this pilot program and had motorized scooters that appear to violate state law.
Can Town Council address that? Mr. Corain.
Todd Corain, Transportation Administrator for the Town of Brookline. So, ourselves, we are not the only pilot that ran in the state of Massachusetts. We were one of four. Brookline, Salem, and Winchester all had municipal-based pilots. And MAST DOT actually ran their own pilot with MBTA, where they licensed scooters to park and operate off of their, off of their property. And what we, what we based ours off of, and what those other communities based theirs off of, was that the viewpoint by MAST DOT, in September of 2018, they released a statement that upon review, the department concluded that those laws, the chapter ninety, section one E, I believe, were likely not intended to address and regulate the specific types of vehicles. And as of January, before Brookline voted to enter the pilot, MAST DOT worked with Governor Baker to file legislation to clarify that these scooters were not intended to be captured under that, that section within state law. Joining Governor Baker's legislation, Senator Boncorrie, who is the Chair, the Chairman of the Joint Committee on Transportation on the Senate side, filed his own legislation to clarify the law as well, as well as the MAPC that worked with the cities of Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Town of Brookline, Town of Watertown, that also filed legislation to clarify that these devices were never meant to be captured in that law, which was written originally to deal with Vespis and gas-powered mopeds.
Mr. Moderator, I have a question for Mr. Corain, while he's up here.
Hold on, hold on. Do you have your answers?
So, I guess the answer is that the state legislature needs to clarify, and there's been some proposals, but nothing's been passed? Is that sort of more or less?
Correct. There's three, there's three main laws to clarify the language. However, MAST DOT had issued the opinion that the current devices, which are essentially razor scooters with an electric engine attached to them, were not meant to be captured under the existing state law.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I just wanted...
Who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim Smith, Precinct six. I'm putting in a plug for, I have no problems with waiting until we hear what the state has to say. I think that there are a lot of benefits, you know, that there would be consistency of laws and regulations across the state, which would allow for, ultimately, for transporting across town boundaries, that there would be attention, that more attention, and with more clout, to design and quality issues of the equipment. I think, you know, they, they currently have tiny lights that you can't see at night. I just think that there are all sorts of safety issues. And, and I think, you know, there are a lot of things, such as the user agreements and the need for insurance, and these are all, seem to be subjects that are under consideration at the state level, and I'm not sure are necessarily doable at the town level. So, I'm supporting the original version, which is the AC version. Thank you. Thank you.
Anita Johnson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct eight. I had a couple of questions for Mr. Terrain, Corain, excuse me, about the terrain. Does the town have any information on the demand for scooters? How many scooter riders there are? How many trips there are? How many miles there are? The average distance per trip? The preferred routes? The safety of the riders, in our experience, and the police department's experience? Or any other information you have regarding the plenitude or lack of plenitude of the use of these scooters?
So, I have summary data. Todd Corain, Transportation Administrator for the Town of Brookline. The pilot, which ended on November fifteenth, recorded over one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand trips. The, the, the unique users, meaning the users who, who took at least one ride, for one company, they had over twenty-five-thousand unique users. A second, the second-largest company had twenty-two-thousand unique users. And the third company, which had only been in the pilot since late August, had three-thousand unique users. The average trip time was ten minutes and thirty-three seconds. The average trip distance was one-point-zero-three miles. In total, there were over thirty-three-thousand hours of scooters, of people operating on scooters. And over one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand miles were traveled on scooters in the pilot. And considering that, two of the three companies did not allow the scooters to travel outside the boundaries of Brookline, as you heard earlier, all of that was contained in a six-point-eight square mile area that was Brookline. In terms of accidents, reported accidents, we had six reported through the Brookline Police Department dispatch, and fourteen reported through the companies. And then, the police department logged almost six-hundred reported stops of e-scooter users. The vast majority of that were done for educational purposes, to advise a, a user how to operate it properly, that they weren't operating it properly, et cetera. Did that answer everything?
I certainly hope so. On my left.
Hi, Beth Cates, Town Meeting Member, Precinct nine. I, I was hoping that someone would address some information that I have read that would contradict the environmental soundness of these scooters, namely that although it's been said that they replace car rides, in fact, I've read that they replace pedestrians and bicycle trips. More often than they replace automobile trips. And also, there are a lot of environmental concerns about the fact that there are trucks that are gas-powered that have to pick up these scooters and charge these scooters. And also, I was very surprised to find out that most of these scooters need to be replaced about every eight months, and they put hazardous waste in form of rechargeable batteries into the environment. And, you know, they have to be replaced. So, they're, in fact, from what I understand, not as environmentally sound as people are making it out to be, and I'm wondering if someone can address these concerns.
Mr. Harris? You've got a lot of concerns to address, Mr. Harris.
Okay. Let's see. The first one was, are they replacing car drivers or, or other people, other users? And basically, to repeat, to repeat something I said earlier, let me get this right. User surveys in Portland, Oregon, North Carolina, and by one of the vendors in, in Brookline have found that about a third of the users are scooting instead of either driving themselves or, or using Lyft or Uber. About a third. And this is spontaneous, is the point I was making. And with an organized campaign, that could be increased still more. And I'm sorry, the, the, I've forgotten the second part of your question. Oh, environmental impact of the...
The second part of the question is about, you know, vehicles used to service them, and the, the fact that there's hazardous waste, and they only last for eight months.
Okay. So, the service truck part of it is actually not an essential part of the scooter operation. When you think about it, most of the places that there, people have one-hundred-and-ten-volt plugs everywhere. And as I, as I said before, I would be fine having a little contract with the vendor, some part of my driveway have a, a charging station right there. So, between corals, in the, the town centers, and I bet you the scooter companies could arrange contracts with people on probably, hopefully, every single street in town, so that the scooters could be parked not on the street, but at these places where they would be charged overnight without requiring a van or a pickup truck to, to pick them up, move them somewhere, using fuel, and then return them.
But that's not the way it's done now, anywhere I've seen them.
Well, that's why I said Brookline can be a leader, since we have the experience. We can, we can insist on what contract terms we want. And then, your final question was about the durability of the cycle, of the scooters. Basically, you know, I honestly have the feeling that a number of the scooter companies have done what's called value engineering, which is they initially come up with a, a nice sturdy model, but they know that there's been so much opposition, people throwing them into rivers, whatever, people kicking them, that they, they then pare down the quality. So, you know, that's a lot of the scooters we've been seeing. And look, when you think about it, the Brookline pilot was six months, was it? Eight months? Whatever, a very short period of time. But I am still riding bike frames, bicycles, that I bought in the nineteen-eighties, and they're still in, I've had to replace brake pads, but that's it, you know, kind of thing. So, the scooters could be made as sturdy as we want them to be. So, as, and as micro mobility becomes a major new option, I think more and more manufacturers will make higher-quality, long, more long-lasting models.
Thank you. Mr. Englander?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Englander, Precinct six. Question for Ms. Hamilton and/or Mr. Dempsey. Is there any reason why the licensing and regulation, regulatory process, process of drafting and approving regulations in Brookline for another pilot or for a program would be any less robust under the Madison Amendment? And if, if we were to, to, to pass the main motion, could any regulations we draft later be, assuming that state regulation is, is delayed and, and coming, regulations that we draft be modified subsequently to reflect any, anything that is part of the, the state law that would need to be reflected here?
Ms. Hamilton?
I think the two biggest challenges by not waiting for the state is what to do about helmet requirements, and then also, what do we charge people with depending on certain infractions with police enforcement? So, those two would kind of remain in limbo without the state clarifying... So those two would kind of remain in limbo without the state clarifying. But another pilot would be very robust. Keep in mind that the pilot program was pretty much volunteer effort on my part and our town transportation administrator. So that would require us to sign up for another turn. And I would do that now with eyes wide open. So I would need a little more convincing.
Thank you.
Did Chris want to say something?
Yeah. Mr. Dempsey?
Just to maybe amend Select Board Member Hamilton's statement a little bit. I think she identified two very important questions in terms of helmets and fines. But having discussed this very quickly with Todd while we're sitting there, we believe that the existing Transportation Board-enabling legislation has within it the authority for our regulations to make a decision on those two items. So there are important questions, but there is less of question about whether we have the authority to do that. I think what you're hearing, I hope, from both me and from Select Board Member Hamilton and others tonight, is that under any circumstances, under any version that we vote on tonight, we're going to have a very deliberate process. There is going to be a robust set of public hearings and opportunities for input, and we are not in a rush to bring back a pilot or to promulgate regulations even absent a pilot for, as Mr. Nannian points out, the existing scooters that are on the road that we do want to address, but we don't want to address in a rushed way. Thank you.
Let's make sure we're talking about the same things here. There is no such thing as the Madison Amendment. The main motion incorporates the Madison proposal to delete Clause One. So there is a main motion which has, omits Clause One, and there is an amendment offered by the Advisory Committee which would replace, that is, re-insert Clause One. Okay, let's see. Yes, ma'am?
Bettina Neufind. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct One. I'd like to echo some of the concerns about how the environmental externalities are being born, specifically about whether they are being inflicted on the community that is conducting the pilot as opposed to the profit-seeking companies that are selling us these pilots. So, you know, there seem to be some incentive problems. So number one, you know, I'm a bike commuter, and the bike lane infrastructure is something, you know, that we as a town have been sort of eking out, you know, one stretch, one block, one side of the street at a time, and is something that we have gotten, you know, consistent pushback on the cost of, you know, the space requirements. And, you know, when the scooters sort of came online, you know, the first thing that I noticed is that, you know, as any biker can tell you, there is really no place where it is okay to be not a car or not a pedestrian, where you are not interfering with somebody else's use that is considered proprietary use of either pedestrians on the sidewalk or cars on the street. So, you know, to me, sort of the question number one is, okay, so let's say, you know, all of the environmental concerns are in fact, you know, you balance the scales and it's a green thing to do, but where do they go? Right? And is that something that we should figure out after the fact? Or is that something that we should proactively have a plan for before we sign on for another round of this? And, you know, just to also echo the concerns about having these safety concerns, like where, you know, kids were left and right photocopying parents' IDs, grabbing the scooters, you know, having absolutely no instruction in road safety whatsoever because there are kids who didn't even have driver's licenses yet, you know, just willy-nilly sort of riding all over the place, where if you're going to have people-powered or people-scale riders, you know, you have to have public safety programs in place. I don't think using police resources as the primary education method is sensible or cost-effective. And I think if you look at any place that has actual infrastructure for person-scale mobility, these are things that are taught in schools. These are things that require licensing. So again, I just, I worry a lot that we are putting the cart before the horse. And I'm, you know, I'm as excited as anybody about micromobility, but, you know, I feel like it really requires a comprehensive plan. So I really appreciate and I'm heartened by hearing about the eyes wide open and about the plans to be thoughtful about it, but I really feel like there's a lot of planning to do.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal.
Yes, thank you. Marty Rosenthal again, Precinct Nine, Chair of PACS. I'm hoping we can hear from Representative Vitolo as to the following question. The cutting-edge issue between the two motions is really the advisory trying to put back the language about waiting for the state. And when we discussed this at the PACS board, the reason we voted no action on the entire article was because of that language that they're putting back in, which we objected to because we have, shall I say, minimal confidence in the state. In fact, Sean Lynn Jones, the other week, last week, misquoted my intentional misquote of Ronald Reagan. I say distrust and verify, and my experience with the State House puts that in spade. So I wonder if we could hear from Representative Vitolo as to his level of confidence that the state is really going to do anything about this.
Is Representative Vitolo here? Yes, of course.
I had a feeling he was.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member at Large, speaking in my role as State Representative from the 15th Norfolk District. I had a hunch this question might come, so I made some notes for myself. The Joint Committee on Transportation, led by Chairs Strauss and Boncorre, have quite a large number of things on the docket over the next year, including transportation revenue. Options include the gas tax, congestion pricing, corporate taxation, tolling, downtown parking space taxing, TNC fares like Uber and Lyft, fare hikes and the like. Transportation spending, state roads, state bridges, MBTA, RTAs, Chapter 90, and so forth. They're also in the midst of an RMV mismanagement investigation, a transportation bond bill, considering what to do about driving under the influence of marijuana, and investigating the TCI, the carbon tax for transportation fuels. In light of all of that, I'm not so sure that we will get to e-scooter regulations. And I will just add that I was at the same PACS board meeting that my friend, Mr. Rosenthal, was at, and I did not hear a broad dissatisfaction with the ability for the state to get things done that he did. Thank you.
You've certainly learned diplomacy up there. Mr. Richmond?
I have a follow-up question for Representative Vitolo. Have any of those bills gotten out of committee? I mean, where are they in their process? We know that the state legislature has many heavy duties, but some bills move faster than others.
It is a long list of issues, some of which are bills, some of which are not, all of which have been heard by zero or one or two or three committees and are in different stages along the way. I don't know that it would be very helpful to run down the list.
I had another question then. Clint Richmond, sorry, Precinct Six, I didn't identify myself. So is it correct that the people who have private scooters like Mr. Ananian are not subject to much regulation at the moment? I don't know who would answer that.
Mr. Dempsey?
Chris Dempsey, Chair of the Transportation Board. So there are existing regulations on the books, and we don't have the time tonight to go into all the details and the permutations of it, but I will say that the Transportation Board recognizes that we are in a period of great change in transportation. We saw that three or four years ago with services like Uber and Lyft, and that came on the scene in the midst of this body debating taxi medallions and making the taxi business, you know, almost, well, changed dramatically, let's say, since Uber and Lyft came in place. Similar things are happening with things like scooters or also bicycles, where 10 years ago, it was just a bicycle was a bicycle. You now have various versions of e-bicycles that are pedal-assisted or have their own motors. And so we're doing our best to try to keep up with that regulation and striking the balance between trying to keep up with the changing world while also not rushing into making decisions that we're not comfortable yet without having learned about those changes sufficiently. So we don't always get that balance right. We strive to achieve it. And I think under, again, I hope what you're hearing is under any circumstance, we know that this is an issue that we need to address and hear from the public on as we move forward in a deliberate fashion.
If I can have one more quick question, Mr. Moderator. I appreciated Mr. Corain's report on the scooter pilot. I was just wondering if there's, and there was a survey, I know, I don't know what happened to the results of the survey. I was just wondering if, when we can expect, you know, a more comprehensive or written report on this subject. Thank you.
Mr. Corain?
So we did have a survey that ended right before Thanksgiving. We'll be going over all of that data, combined with all of the information we collected via the trips, and we expect to have a report by mid to late January.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Abbott White, Precinct Nine. I've been accused of being an anti-scooter kind of guy. And for the record, I just wanted to say that when, 60 years ago, when I was 16, I had a Vespa. And after I had a Vespa, I had a Triumph Bonneville. So I'm not exactly a stranger to 70 or 80 miles an hour on one of these little devices. I have a question for Mr. Dempsey, and that's this. Twice a week, I head down to Mass General, and I go down Beacon Street, and there's a bicycle lane there. And you take your life in your hands, I think, if you're a bike rider. We've had one, I know for sure, I think perhaps two deaths in that area, one with someone slamming into a truck.
You know, excuse me, Mr. White, this article is about the e-scooter program and not bicycles. Is your question about bicycles?
Well, actually, they're connected, and that is the question, if that's all right.
Yeah, well, try, try out.
Good man. All right. So here we go. All the way down there, the kinds of incidents that I see between cars and bikes, and bikes have been around 100 years. In this town, we have people sailing through intersections, including Coolidge Corner, through red lights. We have the police trying desperately to sort of keep people from getting killed on them. My question is this: Would it not make more sense to, as a former speaker said, to concentrate on the bicycle and safety regulations, proper licensing, training, and safety provisions that all can understand and practice, rather than moving into this, not just uncharted waters, but dangerous waters? Would it not make more sense to put our energies there? Mr. Dempsey?
It may be collateralally relevant, but why don't you respond to it anyway?
Chris Dempsey, Chair of the Transportation Board. We have a lot on our plate, Mr. White, maybe not as much as the Joint Committee on Transportation that Representative Vitolo referenced earlier, but we try to get to as many issues as we can. I will say, I'm glad you pointed out Beacon Street, where this body, Town Meeting, has approved a resolution to take steps towards bringing back the Bridle Path as a potential separated facility and for cyclists, joggers, and others in the Olmsted design or tradition. And I will say that that is also generally the preference of the Transportation Board, that we are creating spaces that are separate for pedestrians, for cyclists and scooter users, and then for drivers and vehicles. And our sense is that every user of the street is better off, the more that we can separate those things so that they're not in conflict and that as few people are getting hurt as possible. It's not always something we're able to do, given the right-of-way restrictions in our town, the tight geometries on many streets, but it's something that we aspire to do.
Thank you. Well, you see who's at the microphones. I have two other speakers, David Travett and Mike Toefel, who signed up to speak. The question's been called. Is there a second? All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Now, we deal first with the Advisory Committee amendment, which is to re-insert into the main motion Clause One that would call for the selectmen to not adopt further e-scooter regulations until the state acts. So on the Advisory Committee amendment...
Recorded vote, Mr. Moderator.
On 35, yes, of course. This is Article 16 AC Amendment. If you vote in favor of this, you'll be voting in favor of including Clause One in the main Motion fails by a vote of 48 in favor, 136 opposed, and 11 abstentions on the main motion, which does not include Clause One. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Nope, not now. The motion carries by a majority vote. We turn to Article 17. This is the third of the articles that I mentioned as to which there is no opposition, and Town Meeting will overwhelmingly, I presume, approve. The motion is on a brown tan supplement on pages one and two, that the town adopt a resolution having to do with electrical vehicle chargings. Moved by Mr. Ananian, seconded by Ms. Hamilton. Mr. Ananian?
Oh, look at that. Already up there. Hello. My name is Scott Nannian. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 10 and apparently a potential scofflaw. Let's check that this all works here. So, warrant Article 17. If you remember from way back in November, didn't we do something very similar to this before? And the answer is yes, but no. So yes, this has to do with the eventual migration from gasoline vehicles to electric vehicles. And yes, as before, electric vehicles, even plug-in hybrids, significantly reduce our CO2 emission, even with the current composition of the electric grid in Massachusetts. And of course, I don't think the prop is here tonight, but if you do that, you can reduce the CO2 emission from your electric vehicle even, or your plug-in hybrid even more. Okay. So the issue with this amendment is that 15% of the vehicles in town are what's called garage orphans. The, and that's about 5,000 cars here in town are parked in spaces that are not owned or controlled by the vehicle owner, so spaces which are rented, more or less. And we already passed overwhelmingly warrant Article 31. And we already passed overwhelmingly warrant Article 31, just an hour ago, say, which requires that 30% of the vehicles registered in Brookline are electric by 2030. And so if you do the math, 30% of those 5,000 garage orphans are about 1,500 of the spaces that are available for rent should be EV-ready by 2030. So the question is, how are we going to do that, given that the number now is probably in the very low double digits? So we have a mechanism. The state has, requires what's called an open-air parking license. Folks who own spaces which they rent out to others to park in must, by existing state law, acquire an open-air parking license from the Select Board. This licensing process can be quite cumbersome, which is perhaps a whole nother talk, but it does provide us an opportunity for action. And here's a conflict of interest statement, that my family in fact does own an open-air parking license ourself. Our house was built with five parking spaces, which is somewhat of a rarity. Five is also the maximum that most places in town can have for a single-family house by state, by our local zoning. So we rent out the spaces we don't use, we list our charger and plug share, and can offer EV charging to interested parkers. And so we're very much sort of an example of what I'm hoping to encourage more of in town. So warrant Article 17 asks three separate things. One is that it considers an incentive program for small lot owners. So unfortunately, the rate of compliance with getting an open-air parking license right now is very low, so I felt that mandating EV requirements for small lot owners was not going to be very effective. The parameters of such an incentive program are left to the referral committee. Consider requiring EV-ready spaces for large owners, so there are some very large lot owners, and we can make demands as a town on those. And to endeavor to add charging options to overnight resident parking lots as well. And that's something the town can do. And just for reference, there are about 33 licensed open-air parking lots with more than 10 spaces, so you can imagine the largest of those, we can easily make requirements on as a town. And I was informed by the facilities manager for BU that in fact they're considering that, and if you give them two years to do it, they could do anything. So, you know, phasing in a requirement over two years seems eminently reasonable. And that's basically it. This is part of a comprehensive plan put forward, and I'd like to publicly credit the leadership of Zoe Lin as a sustainability coordinator and the many working groups that have worked on these issues, bringing them to Town Meeting this year. And we've talked about warrant Article 14, which was my earlier warrant article, warrant Article 31, of course, sets our goals for EVs. And warrant Article 15 for the reducing the parking minimums in congested districts is part of this as well. You can't just sort of add EVs to all the parking lots and declare the job done. We also need to manage where those parking lots are. So thank you very much.
Ms. Khan.
Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15, speaking for unanimous Advisory Committee and recommending favorable action on this warrant article. I just want to echo what Scott just said, that the discussion that we held, that Advisory, the subcommittee held in reviewing this warrant article, was immensely improved by the participation of Zoe Lin. And it led to a very, I think, very positive and productive meeting, which is, I think, why we ended up with a unanimous vote. So kudos to Zoe's efforts. Wherever you are, Zoe. On November 7, the Advisory Committee reconsidered its earlier vote on warrant Article 17, voted to support the Select Board's recommended language, which is what you have before you. The Advisory Committee reconsidered, the vote did not make it into the combined reports, I don't think, well, maybe you have it now. The resolution's final language includes recommendations by the Advisory Committee, namely to focus the resolution on the primary goal of the requested study committee, which is to consider an incentivized pilot program to encourage open-air parking licenses to install EV chargers, and also by adding a fiscal year 2022 target date for putting together such a pilot program. It also recommended that the study committee consider installing both L1 and L2 charging outlets, so, which would allow an EV vehicle to be charged faster in less time in all overnight resident parking lots. So by a unanimous vote, we support warrant Article 17. Thank you.
Now, we, I have the selectmen signed up, but Ms. Heller was going to speak for the selectmen. She's not here, and no one on the board has leapt into the breach. So we proceed directly to the main motion, which is the vote on, yes?
I just wanted to say one brief thing. Jules Milner Braghi, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12.
Sure.
Marking one interesting and, I think, beneficial point of synergy between 15 and 17, which is that by virtue of 15, eliminating the parking minimums for commercial uses, it enables some of those commercial establishments which may have excess parking, it could be a great site for an EV charger in advantageous locations, now are more empowered because of 15's passage to add those EV chargers and make them available to the public because the zoning no longer prohibits it.
Thank you. On the motion on page one and two of the brown-tanned supplement, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Now, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to Article 19. It's 1022. Article 19 is one of those as to which there is no opposition, but it's a very important proposal, and it will take 30 minutes of explanation before we can even begin to think about voting, and there may be questions from the floor. So I will take a motion to adjourn until, is there a second? This is a motion to adjourn until 7:00 on Wednesday evening, December 11. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion carries by a majority vote. Town meeting is adjourned until 7:00 PM on Wednesday, December 11.